Yeah.
Solid, anyway.
Just go, go ahead, I'll be fine.
Shall we? Would the rest of you like to begin?
Okay. I'm going to let everybody in then, all right?
Open the doors, Seth.
They are opening and... Who is that?
Not me.
It's all right, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, I believe all of those who are in the waiting room have entered. This is the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen meeting. You were expecting something else, well, please stay with us. Today is Tuesday, February 9th, sorry, February 9th. I like to call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. They move by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Karen. We are meeting in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency, Related Emergency Executive Order from March of 2020. And Town of Situate public meetings will be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded, it can also be viewed live on the Situate Community Television page. It is, as I said, being recorded and it will be shown on both Channel 9 on our cable access and the YouTube Situate Community Television channel, Humar.
Karen, we need to do a roll call vote for the acceptance of the agenda.
I was about to do that.
Thank you.
Because we are meeting remotely, we will have, all of our votes will be taken by roll call, and we now have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the agenda. So, Lorraine, if you would do the roll call, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
She's still trying to get in.
She's coming back in here shortly.
Okay, we'll go back to her. Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Conley, are you back?
I think I am.
We hear you, you're echoey though, so.
Oh. All right, I probably have to change my settings.
No, just tell her to turn her phone off, Karen.
You're in here twice, Karen, that's all.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. Do you accept the agenda, Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Conley's?
Yeah, that's good. I'm sorry.
Whoever has a...
It's just Lorraine because she does, I got, well.
Okay. Sorry, guys. Okay, are we good?
You are good now, yes.
Okay, great, okay, so we have an acceptance of the meeting minutes. Before we launch into the agenda, I wanted to just take a second to call out our Board of Health and our town administrator who have been, and they've been working around the clock throughout this pandemic, but as we step up our vaccination and, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that we get our sites up and running and to answer residents' questions. So, thank you, Mr. Vidrell, thank you to the entire Board of Health and your team. It's, it's been an extraordinary time and you guys are handling everything great. With that, I, oh, before we go to the town administrator, I will ask if anyone would like to walk in or zoom in to our meeting. This is your opportunity, you can go to the reaction section of the Zoom icons and raise your hand or just take yourself off video so we can see you. Are there any walk-ins this evening? I see none. So, I will ask our town administrator to please provide us with his report.
Good evening, we'll start off with the vaccination schedule that Karen was talking about. We are in phase two of the state's vaccination schedule. Residents 75 and older are now eligible for vaccinations. If you are looking for vaccination, you need to go to the state website, s.gov/covidvaccine map. There's an interactive map there where you can look at all the vaccination sites and pick one that you would like to try to get a appointment at. The Marshfield Fairgrounds vaccination site is up and running as of yesterday. According to the Patriot Ledger, Beverly Walsh of Situate was the first person to get her vaccination in Marshfield, so congratulation to her. It is available to Plymouth County residents only, so you must be a resident of Plymouth County to go to that particular vaccination site. They will accept appointments as long as they have vaccinations to give out. When they've reached their limit, they'll stop. When they get more vaccinations, they'll open it back up. They anticipate when up and running, they will do about 600 vaccinations a day at that site, so it's really going to be dependent upon how much vaccine they have to give out. The Town of Situate will be setting up a clinic for next Tuesday, 2/16, at the Harbor Community Center. We will have a very limited number of shots in the neighborhood of 80 to 100. That is all we will be getting from the state, but we will give those out next week. The link will go live on our website right around noon time tomorrow, so people can log into situateMA.gov and there will be a link where they can go into and sign up for that vaccination clinic. Again, 75 and older, you must be a Situate resident for that particular vaccination clinic. As of last Friday, the governor pointed out that the mass vaccination sites of Gillette, Fenway, and the one in Springfield had over 20,000 available appointments for this particular week. So, people looking to get vaccinations, their best bet would either be to try the Marshfield one or go to one of the mass vaccination sites. If you are having an issue, the state has stood up the 211 line, people can call 211, get information, they can also help you make an appointment if you don't have a computer, don't have the ability to use a computer, or you can call Council on Aging at 781-545-8722 and they can assist you. As soon as we get vaccines, we will be standing up additional clinics, we just don't know when we're going to get them or how much. We are very excited that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is expected to get approval later this month, that is really a game changer in this, and that it is regular handling, regular refrigeration, and it only takes one shot. So, those are the vaccination sites. If you wish to volunteer to help out in Marshfield, you can go to the Town of Marshfield website and there's a link you can follow to sign up to volunteer. Monday to Monday in town, we had 51 new cases last week, that was down from 50 the previous week. We are back in the yellow on the COVID map. We had a positivity rating of 4.36%, which was down from 5.73% the previous week. The statewide positivity rate yesterday was 4.32. So, our numbers are going in the right direction. As of yesterday, the governor had reopened the economy a little more. Restaurants, gyms are now at 40% capacity instead of 25% capacity, so we hope that that helps them, but people still need to be vigilant, still wear their masks, do the right things, keep those numbers going down. The Board of Health, Drew Shealy, is meeting with the Situate Chamber, I believe, next week to try to plan some summertime events. Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, but we do want to make some plans to have some stuff in place. If things keep going well, the vaccine gets out and we can get back to some sort of normalcy this summer. Speaking of summers, believe it or not, next Tuesday, beach stickers go on sale.
My gosh.
You can get your beach stickers online through the town hall. You can process them and pay for them online, they'll be mailed out to you, the staff's very efficient, but they go on sale next week, so please get in, get early, and get your beach stickers. In addition, we put the online survey for Pier 44 Harbor Community Center, went live yesterday at 10 o'clock. Within 24 hours, we had almost 600 responses. The next phase, tomorrow, we're hoping, if you can see behind me, we have that signboard with a sign in front of it, you can't see it too well, but the sign has a QR code. Lorraine pointed out the QR code should be on the top, not the bottom, so people don't have to bend over to scan it. So, we've made that change, but that will be going outside the Harbor Community Center, we're going to put one, we'll put one here in the town hall, and then depending upon how many signs we have, we may put one either at the dog park or at the golf course, so people can just use their phones, read the QR code, and go right into the survey. That was Andrew's idea, thank you, Andrew, and Mike Mincella is the one who got it all, the QR code, our staff put together the sign, so. You know, hopefully we got a lot of responses, almost 600 in 24 hours is pretty good. I'll see what we have tomorrow, but we really want to know what people want to think about that, I'm not going to spoil it and tell you what people are thinking at this point, but so far, good response. I did send it to Andrew, Andrew, I don't know if you've looked at some of the comments, but I thought it was, I thought it was pretty good at this point, so I'm excited to see what we get.
Very thoughtful comments thus far.
Good.
Next up, we had some calls about the Egypt Beach berm project and the storm. The beach, the berm held up pretty well. I talked to Kevin about it, I said, "What about that, what about that, what about that?" And, you know, the engineers pointed out, the berm's supposed to move, it's a live berm, it's doing what it's supposed to do, it did hold up well from the storm. We do have some issues at Surfside all the way down the end. There's a fossil there that was not part of the project, it was privately owned, the homeowner would not give us an easement to do the work. So, that took kind of a beating because it didn't get the reinforcement that the rest of the berm got during the project, so we will be sending that owner a letter saying that we believe there's issues with his berm and he needs to do something to fix it. And I'll keep the board appraised of what happens on that, but the rest of the berm, Kevin, unless you disagree or not, I think the rest of the berm held up pretty well and did exactly what it was designed to do, so that was good news. I think we got a lot more flooding than we anticipated from that storm, it kind of snuck in, we get some mild flooding down at Cole Park and some other places. Speaking of water, just to let, keep the board up, you know, we did have the pipe burst in the meeting room. We discovered this week that the carpeting in the meeting room went under the riser where your table was, so that has come out, we've now had to take up the entire carpet, take out the riser, take out the dais that you guys used. So, we're looking at how we want to put that back together, including whether we want to put the riser back in or not, different configurations. We're going to talk with Seth when we come up with something, we'll let you know, but this is our one chance, it's been taken apart before we put it back together. We want to make sure we put it back together in the best way possible to utilize what's really kind of a small space. Finally, just to let everybody know, the boat that we ordered, the fire department harbor master boat is in, came in yesterday. Be careful, the steps are very slippery in it, they need a little bit of traction on them, I know that firsthand, but it is down at the boatyard, they will be putting the fire pump on it over the next several weeks, and it should be in the water ready to go sometime in March. I took some pictures, I'll send them out to the board later so you can see them. It's a good-looking boat, and I think it'll serve us well and hopefully we'll never actually have to use it. Its fire capability, fire prevention capability is really pretty exciting, and as I said, hopefully we will never have to use it, but that's all I have for now, I don't want to take too much time. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thanks, Jim, and I'm glad that you landed at least, you know, only on one side. Does the board have any questions for Jim Abada's report? Ms. Conley?
It's actually not a question, but I'd just like to point out, there is a site that people can try to go to, ma covidvaccines.com. A young software developer from Lexington or Arlington put it together. My son pointed it out to me, I went and looked at it today, I'm still not eligible, but it's very informative, and for example, on the 14th of this month, there are 646 slots open at Gillette. So, I don't think it covers every single possible place, for example, Situate's obviously not on it, but it's, it's just another way to get access, and I know it's been frustrating for people, so people might just want to give it a try and see what they think. Marshfield is on there, and I forget what the situation is there, I think they're booked up, but just another way to get the vaccine everyone wants.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for our town administrator? All right, well, thank you very much, Jim. Our next agenda item is we're welcoming our Plymouth County Treasurer, hello, Mr. O'Brien. We're very happy to see him because he's bringing us lovely news, so I will open the floor up to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I have to admit, I could listen to the town administrator's report all night long. He did such a great job, and I don't know if you selectmen appreciate the segues that he works into his report, I particularly like, speaking of summer and then he went right to beach stickers, speaking of water, he mentioned the lead, I was, kudos to the administrator for a, an informative and yet erudite report, I was terribly impressed. Yes, I do have good news for the Town of Situate, and just wanted to take a moment to give you an update. The town administrator called and said you had a cancellation, so I felt like I was grabbing a slot available to give you an update. Let me just report quickly that, to date, we have delivered 16 checks from the Plymouth County Cares Program to the Town of Situate. Those checks have totaled $1,245,352.73. I am this accurate because I know Nancy is paying close attention, and I want to get everything exactly to the penny. And the news today that I'm delivering on behalf of the county commissioners and the Plymouth County Cares Program, and just a reminder, the commissioners, County Commissioner Chair Greg Hanley, Commissioner Sandra Wright, and our newest member, Commissioner Jared Valenzola, have been working hard to get these checks out. We have four more checks that we're going to be bringing along, and those total $351,937.52. With the delivery of those checks, Situate will have received 20 checks totaling $1,597,290.25. It is clear that Situate has been a huge beneficiary of the Plymouth County Cares Program, the effort the county has taken to bring these monies back to the county and directly to the towns. However, you folks know that this wouldn't be possible without the hard work of your team. I have to give commendation, of course, to the town administrator, but particularly to your Finance Director Nancy Holt. As we are processing these myriad of claims from our 27 communities, my team is constantly saying, "Boy, we wish they would submit them like Situate did," or even perhaps we could have them call Situate to see how it's done and learn. I can tell you, this is a daunting task on our part. We have received over 200 submissions from our communities, very few of them passed muster as well as Situate's does. I also had to report that you have more coming, you have an additional 14 submissions already in the process, and I noted, and this is a rhetorical question really for the board, that there was only one town that made a submission to our program on Christmas Eve. And it will not surprise this board to know that that was submitted by your Finance Director Nancy Holt on Christmas Eve. Now, the good news is I was here to get it, but I don't think any other town submitted that week, let alone on Christmas Eve. So, really, I wanted to just give you that news about where you stand and to pay special recognition to the Finance Director for doing such a great job. She and I speak regularly, in fact, throughout all of this, she and I had to attend a webinar class this afternoon, so she's probably sick of seeing me already today, but she does a great job, your team does a great job, your administrator is always available to answer our questions as well, and Situate should be pleased not only with the effort, but the results of this program. The town is, is receiving far more money than they would otherwise, and so Plymouth County has been pleased to be administering this program and to tout Situate as one of our success story. So, I did that in fewer, fewer minutes than I thought I might, and am available for questions, Chair, if that's appropriate, otherwise I know you have a busy agenda and I didn't want to take up too much time.
Thank you, Treasurer O'Brien, you have covered everything I would have said, which is, it's, it's nice to see that we all recognize the extraordinary team we have at town hall and, and their efforts really are paying off, and we really appreciate you, you folks outside of town hall recognizing that, how lucky we are, and we're not, and they're, and they're ours, so don't anyone poach them. I don't have any questions, thank you for stopping in with us today and for, for advancing those checks. Does the board have any questions or comments for Treasurer O'Brien?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's always nice to deliver good news.
Yeah, no.
I just want to thank the Treasurer and his staff, I mean, it's been a, I know how much work Nancy has to do to get these in, and they have them coming in from 20-something cities in town, so I know it's a monumental task, as Tom said, if this money had gone to the state, we would not have gotten as much back as we've gotten back. The state took a little bit bigger vig than I think we would like, so that the county was willing to take this on is to our benefit, I know it's a lot of work, so Tom and his staff have been doing a lot of work, they got a lot more to go. As you said, we got about 2.8 million total, we've got not quite half of that yet, so there's a big stack that Nancy keeps sending them all the time, but they've done a really good job, again, the town and the, and the county made out doing it this way, and we're lucky and grateful that we got those extra dollars because every dollar's going to count.
Thank you very much, it means a lot to us. I, I think you folks will recall that there was some question early on about this program, but it has proven to be a wild success, and even some of our early questioners have, have come around and have been thrilled with the program, but we really appreciate our partnership with Situate because you're such a shining example for us.
Thanks, well, feel free to stop by anytime with a check.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Well, you're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, but we will be moving on with our agenda if there are no more questions. All right, seeing none, thank you, Ken. We do have our next item on is a public, well, it's actually at 7 o'clock, so we have nine minutes, we are ahead of schedule. As it is a public hearing, we need to wait until 7 o'clock to commence the liquor license discussions, unfortunately.
I think you can do, excuse me, Ms. Canfield, the public hearing is for McCloskey, but you can move to...
To change of manager?
Change of manager, yes.
Yes, we can.
If you'd like, and I see that Maureen Ray is on the call, so.
Okay, you're absolutely right, thank you, thank you, Madam Behind the Curtain, Lorraine. So, we, the, the second item on our number seven is a change of manager for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club. As I am a member, I am going to recuse myself and ask our Vice Chair, Mr. Vignani, if he would walk us through this discussion.
Gladly. I do not need it, great. Okay, we have a motion before us to have a change of management for the Situate Yacht Club. Is Maureen there on the, on the phone?
I'm here.
Great, how are you?
Hi, Tony, how are you?
Good. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on there and the change and any information you have for us?
So, I have been the manager there since 2014 at the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, and I'm here tonight to ask for the change of manager for our liquor license. The liquor license is still in the name of our old manager, so I'm here tonight, I filled out the paperwork, I've submitted everything to Lorraine a couple of weeks ago, and I'm here tonight to, to, for you to see if you could approve the change of manager from the old manager over to myself.
So, basically, just some paperwork changes. Awesome. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No.
Seems pretty straightforward. I'll open it up and see if anyone in the audience has any questions. Have you gone over how to, how to ask the questions, or no, I guess it would be anyone that would just raise their hand? I'm going to see if anyone is asking to participate. I don't see anybody. Great, hope we have no questions, can I have a motion from somebody?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for a change of manager to Maureen Ray for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, 84 Jericho Road, all kinds of alcoholic beverages club license.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Karen. Further discussion, say none, can we have a roll call vote?
Sorry, I had to unmute. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Ms. Canfield abstained.
Correct.
Great, so that's 4 to 0 with one exception. I turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, nice to see you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you. All right, which brings us, we're still six minutes early on our public hearing, unfortunately. Just looking, everything we have requires a discussion. Would, would, how about if the board, since we really do need to wait till 7 o'clock for the public hearing, and I think our other discussions are going to take longer than five minutes, is there anyone that would like to do their liaison report out of order and early? Ms. Conley?
I know that the CPC took a number of votes last night and tabled some projects, approved other projects, but I believe Dan Fennelly, the Chair, will be coming in to address the board about the status of all the projects. Lorraine, probably at our next meeting or early March?
Yes, early March.
Okay, all right, so that's what I have to tell you, I don't want to steal his thunder.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to give us an update on a committee?
I, I can give an update, I don't remember if we did this last time, Jim, maybe, or Nancy, you can help me, did we do an update on our financial broadcast meeting?
A little later on the agenda.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's our...
I guess I'll just note that we did have a meeting with some good news and we'll discuss it a little bit later.
Yeah, Tony, that's our 7:20 budget adjustment discussion item, item.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Conley?
Is that a sling I see on Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the part that caught him when he fell.
Oh, sorry.
I can't segue as well as Mr. Jim, but...
It's a slippery slope, I guess, right?
Definitely slippery.
Tony...
Get the reference.
Tony and I have begun meeting with Jim and the superintendent and school board members monthly, we've had two meetings now, I think we mentioned it last meeting, but we have had our second meeting, I think Mr. Vignani probably agree that it's been very helpful just to have, know that we're going to have, you know, once a month, all of us getting together and, and just, you know, updating each other and kicking around things that can improve, so that's been useful. And I, the library is reopening for browsing, I think next week, Monday, Jim?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, all right, Monday's a holiday, happy vacation week. And Jim alluded to the EDC, or he mentioned the EDC and the Chamber are both working with Situate Loves Local to try to come up with a plan to bring before us to really enhance foot traffic in all of our business districts in the spring and summer, so that's, that's underway. And Linda will be talking about Council of Aging later, so that's what I have. All right, got two minutes left, guys, Andrew?
So, on the Commission on Disabilities, there's, they've had some good discussions with the Widows Walk Project, and when that project is around 80 to 85% done, they were requesting to be able to just analyze both some of the, the access issues that have been around there. So, as of right now, things are looking good, folks seem happy in the direction that they're going, and we've had some initial discussions, also possibly teaming up with REC, maybe doing some projects in the summer, so nothing to announce, nothing official, but could be some fun things that the Commission can be doing late in the summer, so once things are firmed up and we know it could be good as well, kind of a difference avenue, but it's been, it's been good for them, working, working with them on some of those issues, so it's been, it's been fun.
Great, well, thank you, look, we're ahead of schedule because we won't do that later. Anyone else have any updates?
We get out earlier.
Yeah. We get recessed today. Well, it is 6:59, I'm going to declare, that's close enough to 7:00 for our public hearing to discuss the alteration of premises for TK O'Malley's, and Attorney Cassis, I believe this is your ball.
I am.
How are you?
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Is, is Richard Linehan is the first assistant, is he on?
He is.
Pleasure. If you can answer any questions, you may have a few. This is an application to change the description of the licensed premises by adding the deck and the pier, and there'll be four tables on the deck that seat four each, seven tables on the pier that seat two each, that would increase the seating and the capacity of the licensed premises, if you approve it. As you know, with the, with COVID, outside seating and dining is of paramount importance, and it will be in the spring when the weather gets a little bit warmer. We'd appreciate your consideration to allow us to have people out on the deck, you know, on the pier and be still part of the licensed premises.
Thank you, so the board has received a great deal of backup on this. It is confirmed that this is indeed property that they have rights to use. My question, my first question is, this is, obviously, this is a beneficial thing for COVID, the license is for one year, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this will be revisited over time, and the other question was, and I should...
I'm sorry, this, this is Lorraine, I'm sorry to interrupt, this is a permanent license, not for one year. This is a permanent alteration of premise.
Okay, that's fantastic.
I didn't mean, I, I thought you meant, was, you know, we knew it every year, that's, that's why my answer was right, so I'm sorry.
It is renewed every year, but you're, yeah, obviously, okay. It is renewed every year, but you're, yeah, obviously, okay. Um, and the other question is hours of out that right now, are your hours on the deck, this would be the same hours?
Could you ask Richard that question? I don't.
Richard, yeah, I figured that was your question. Can we unmute, Richard? Hold on.
Good to go.
Okay. There you go.
All set?
Yep.
Yeah, we'd like to keep, you know, it pertained to the same hours that the restaurant is open as well. Right now, we're we're, it's kind of, you know, up in the air when we close and open, depending on, you know, the weather and whatnot, but but once the weather starts popping, we want to be able to use your one o'clock, you know, what we've been, we've had all along as a one o'clock license.
Okay, but the deck, it's, is not gonna be covered, is it?
Oh, no.
I mean, the the the.
The pier, the pier area, no.
Okay. Yeah, I I just had a little bit.
In the springtime, when the weather turns warm, you know, then people want to sit outside, which the first warm day is gonna be crazy. Once we get the capacity up, but.
Okay.
Okay, this is Lorraine. I just want to clarify, the hours for TK O'Malley's inside and outside are Monday through Saturday, eight AM to one AM, and Sundays, eleven AM to one AM. There's no differentiation between inside and outside currently.
Correct. Thank you, Lorraine. Uh, does the board have any questions about this application? Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, just one clarification, and Rich, maybe you know this. Um, part of the deck was already under this. This is just the the deck closer to the actual walkway that goes down to the boats, right?
Right, correct.
So, so there should be no difference in terms of of that. And then all of the entertainment is inside. There's never, there's never any bands or any music or anything out on the deck, right? That's all we closed.
Not out there, no. I mean, we've had, we've had singers out on the, near the bar area. Just like a one man singer type of thing, which we're licensed for, but we're not putting them out there on the dock area, no.
Right. Great, thanks, Rich.
Unless you want us to, then we can.
Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I thought there were already tables out on the the pier.
There were. We, this just came to light last year that we didn't realize that we were licensed, not licensed to have them out there, which we always.
Okay.
We've given them temporary permission under the uh
the COVID.
COVID to have them under there, and what they're trying to do is make it permanent.
Okay. Um, and no complaints about people out on the pier from the neighbors?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board on this matter?
No, that was my question, what had changed, because I was, I was trying to understand that as well. So thank you, Karen Conley, for asking.
Good. Uh, are there, if there are no other questions from the board on this matter, it is public hearing. We will invite anyone that would like to raise their hand or take their video off to ask questions. This is your opportunity. So you can do reactions, raise hand, or just simply put yourself on video and visit, right? And I'm scrolling through. I suspect if anyone were going to comment, it would be, can we please open now? But uh, all right, as Jim pointed out, we will have beach stickers available this week, so it's coming soon, next week. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
The board second approved the application for an alteration of licensed premises for an annual restaurant all alcohol, all alcohol liquor license from McCloskey Inc., DPA, TK O'Malley Sports Cafe at one ninety-four Front Street, requesting the addition of deck and pier to the description of the licensed premises. The deck would add four tables of four, and the pier would add seven tables of two.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Conley. Any further questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this matter requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, the matter passes five zero. Good luck. Hopefully, we're all out there soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in. All right, our next item on our agenda, well in advance, is uh to review the fiscal twenty-two budget presentations. We're gonna start with Ms. Bedrow, because as Mr. Vignani alluded, there have been some changes since we first drafted our budgets. Mr. Bedrow?
Thank you. Uh, Tony, feel free to jump in, but uh when we did our original FY twenty-two budget projections, we were using a local aid figure that was still ten percent down from FY twenty, which is the same number we used to build the FY twenty-one budget. Uh, the state used, I think, a billion six out of their rainy day fund to do this year's budget. Uh, we didn't know what they were gonna do for next year. We were concerned where they were gonna get the funds from. Uh, however, the governor's budget has come out uh with new local aid figures. We have spoken to our legislative delegation, uh, and they feel good that the numbers the governor is using are good numbers to use for budget projections. Twenty-something years that I've been doing this, there's only been two times when the legislature has come out less than what the governor's local aid figures were. One was two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and the other was around two thousand three, I think, Nancy, if my memory is is correct. So we adjusted our budget projections to reflect the governor's budget submission, which uh resulted in an additional three hundred and forty-eight thousand and change for the town side, uh, when we go through the financial forecast permutations. So I've come up with recommendations that you'll be discussing tonight, some of the budgets, uh, where that money should be allocated. Uh, the bulk of it, the one big bulk of it is back in the roads and seawalls. Uh, we still want to try to avoid wholesale increases in staff. Uh, the other thing that I had told the board we would address if this number came in would be the staffing at the Council on Aging to staff the new kitchen and lunch program we want to do. So that is in here also. Uh, and I think the other big one, um, with the new senior center coming online, with the increased use of the recreation center, uh, we now have some people going into the gates buildings. We did add some money uh into the custodial lines for those buildings uh to make sure we keep those buildings maintained and cleaned, and it also will give us some redundancy for vacations and things like that to move people around to our other buildings. We have a hard time keeping up with those, so I think the additions to the custodial staffs will be well spent, money that we'll see coming back to us. So I can go through them one at a time. I think they're pretty self-explanatory, so I didn't want to do that and take up the board's time. I figured I'd cover it from thirty thousand feet. Tony, I don't know if you want to add anything at this point?
Um, yeah, the only uh other thing that I'd add is um that in addition to the town getting about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, the school got almost seven hundred thousand dollars more for their budget, which is helpful for them. Um, and then we made adjustments to a few other categories, so we got a few of the line ends, so we got some more detailed information on them. So um, the the group meets regularly. It's a group of nine of us. And it's, it's all, every single line end is vetted pretty thoroughly, so um, and includes the school, um, Director of Finance over there, and and the town people as well, so I think we did a good job looking over it.
And I still think the numbers, uh, were still being conservative in our numbers. I think they're, you know, I think they're good numbers for this point to build our budget with, so.
Thank you, Jim. So the, in our backup, we did receive recommended amendments um for the three hundred and forty-eight thousand, as Jim's outlined, bulkers in roads and seawalls, and then um there's a few other adjustments. So I would suggest that um we're voting on the next week. When do we vote on the budget, actually? Do we have that on the schedule? We do, somewhere.
Somewhere, yeah.
We don't vote until the end.
Yeah, at the end. So um, I would recommend that we all sort of have time to digest that and finish our review of everything that's in here, and should we want to revisit any of those allocations at the end of the process? We should do that during the voting process. Does that make sense for everyone? Tony's nodding. He's our finance guru. Okay, uh, Ms. Conley, have a question?
Yeah, so this is, this money is being restored to the proposed budgets for FY twenty-two?
Right.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's my question. Oh, I I didn't want to ask, be impolite and ask Plymouth County about the kindergarten COVID. That that issue that we had back when we had to uh take money out of the stabilization fund to um make the schools whole for the full day kindergarten, all the semantics, but where are we on that?
So we all have to to get Nancy calmed down on that. Now you got her right back riled up.
Pick up and check.
Didn't mean to. That's claim twenty-two, and they've only processed through claim twenty, so we don't have an answer yet. My sense is it will be reimbursed, but we don't have an answer. Well, and that's why I didn't ask, because I do, I don't want to jinx the whole thing, but. I keep asking. I just don't get an answer. Yeah.
Based on the questions they've asked us, we we feel that it will be reimbursed. We just it's taken them a while to get to some of these because they have so many in front of them, and I know they just brought on someone new to help them with it, but.
He he did seem to indicate that there was more forthcoming for Cituit, so as I said, I didn't want.
We've got another million five pending.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, please, Ms. Curran.
Um, either it's either for Jim or for Linda. Can you explain exactly what type of meal services we're adding into our programming at the Senior Center?
Yeah, Linda will cover that in her budget presentation.
She's next.
She's next.
All right. I will be patient.
Yeah, so I just looked it up. The board will be voting on all projects and articles uh on March ninth. That's our agenda day. So we have a little time. Okay. Um, any other questions about that allocation? Okay, I don't, oh, Mr. Goodrich, sorry.
Just one question, and maybe this again, sorry for being the new guy. When we just say like roads and seawalls, I understand that we're not a community that has sidewalks separate as a separate fund. Is there any reason why we don't have like a sidewalk fund that just dedicates just for sidewalks, or is that all?
I mean, I I defer to Kevin, but you you usually don't redo a sidewalk unless you redo on the road, because doing the sidewalk ruins the road, but usually, I'd say usually it puts it in roads and sidewalks, unless Kevin disagrees, but generally sidewalk involves putting in curbing and all that stuff, so when you do the sidewalk, you do the road at the same time.
And we've been spending, we've been spending a lot of money on sidewalks over up, over the past couple of years, updating them and trying to get them um a little better to where they are. You know, obviously, we'd love another funding source, but it all comes from the same pot of money. In some years, we do more on roads, and some years, we do more on sidewalks.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure it out. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, just a comment on Andrew's thing. That's a, it's a great point, and, you know, what we may do is, you know, you may propose later on in the process, on March ninth, to take a portion of that extra money and put it towards sidewalks.
Right.
We used to have Kevin.
Sorry, Kevin, uh, Tony just went silent on us.
I got it. Do we still have that priority list of areas?
That's what I was gonna ask. Can we get, yeah.
Yeah, we still have a priority list. Um, you know, we're working with Complete Streets. We had a really competitive grant this year that um Sean put together, and uh we want to continue working um our way on Country Way and bring that in towards Green Bush, and um you know, we're hoping we have good results from that this year, and, you know, we're working towards Stockbridge, and we've got, we've got quite a few areas that we're looking at. But, you know, remember, you don't want to do, we hate doing partial projects where you have a sidewalk to nowhere. We would, we would just assume complete it, and we have a lot of sidewalks that are in bad shape um already that that need work on them as as we go.
Ms. Karen?
As a follow-up to all that with Tony, can we get an update on that? Because I do remember years ago, we had a sidewalk plan, so I really have no sense of where we are, you know, what what's been completed, what's, what is left to to uh to take a look at and prioritize, because we get an update on that one of the upcoming meetings?
Yeah, we can send the plan out. We have that, don't we, Kevin?
Yeah, certainly. Um, Sean's on, so I will volunteer him to take care of it and get it all squared away.
Sorry, Sean. It actually might even be a link on the, on the website. I know I looked it up not too long.
I I think it is. I think, I think it is.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Updated?
Sean, maybe all you have to do is give us the link. There you go.
Two thousand and seven, and I I'd say we've made some progress uh since then, but I think a lot of that, that sidewalk plan focused on uh closing gaps uh in sidewalks and completing uh a pathway, you know, to connect to another sidewalk. Um, but I certainly can update that for you.
Okay. I know in the uh, in the draft of the master plan, um, there is an older version that showed the nice to have, so there is a plan floating around. So, okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you, Kevin.
There is a link on uh the DPW website.
Yeah.
For that.
So I hate to even say this, if we're focusing on sidewalks, does that mean the roads have improved significantly, and we're feeling good about them?
No, we'll have that conversation later. But thanks for your help. Ones with new sewer look awesome. Does, uh, I I will just quickly see if there's anyone from the public that would like to just uh make a comment about the budget adjustments. As you heard, they're still tempered. We're still reviewing them. They're not set in stone yet. Um, I do not see any hands raised. So um, if no one else would like to have any comments about that, I will turn to our Council on Aging Director, Linda Hayes, as the beneficiary of the adjustments to uh talk about your um, your changes in your budget.
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Hi, Linda.
Hi, nice to see you. Uh, the budget, well, I I guess there are some changes. Certainly, there are changes anyway, as we anticipate the whole uh timing for moving into the new building, um, which has made great strides and almost done. Um, and the kitchen is beautiful. So honestly, as far as any goals um and objectives are concerned, it's developing the new facility, and I think that's the expectation everyone would have. Increasing activities, programs, and services. And that would include a food service program, which is really something that we have been unable to do up to this point. We have had a, you know, a very old kitchen here, and it's been usable, so we have certainly provided food and meals and special event luncheons to a very limited um clientele for special occasions. Usually, that has been all hands on deck for the staff, uh, and and we've always done a great job, and it has been very appreciated. But what we haven't been able to offer is the socialization and the um even nutritional aspect of providing a daily congregate lunch. Uh, so I hope the food service program would would be that. We, it would be twofold somewhat, because I will say that trends within the senior center community um are maybe to the cafe concept, which we have incorporated as well. So with the building, the kitchen itself, which is a commercial-grade kitchen, um also has a window into the cafe, so it'll be kind of twofold so that the um meals would be prepared daily or four days a week, um is the proposal right now. For a daily lunch, congregate lunch, group seating, and at the same time, um also have available more portable items, lighter fare, you know, maybe a soup and sandwich of the day kind of thing. Because we know there are some people, and again, that's a wide demographic that we're serving, so we want to try to be able to meet all of those needs, but for people who are more on the go there for activities and programs, have a minute, would like to sit down and talk with someone quickly and eat, or take something to go, the cafe would be there, but there's a whole um there's a whole demographic, really, um cohort that I think has not had the congregate meals, and I feel like Cituit should um should feed, feed that that need, that that um area that's been missing for us, really. I think we know that the congregational church had done a weekly lunch, um and it was all volunteer provided, but, you know, people loved that. The, a very, a core group really loved going to that and often had fifty or more people at that luncheon weekly. So on the one hand, we don't want to infringe on that if they want to continue that, but of course, COVID has kind of upset most of the routines, and maybe the timing is good. Um, and we can have those volunteers even work with us at the senior center, but um so the idea that a food service manager, kitchen manager, a cook, chef, um would help to develop menus, um create a product that is really appealing and and draws people in um to the center. The room is beautiful. It's a banquet-sized room. But it's divisible, so one side closer to the kitchen would be something that could be used more regularly and set up easily for a daily luncheon, and then the other side is still able to be used for other things, activities when we need it, and then obviously, when it's open, um, the capacity is is. And then obviously when it's open, the capacity is, is great. It's able to seat 160, obviously. That won't happen for a while. Um, we do hope that that sort of idea returns sometime in the future, near future. But I, I guess that's a little bit of an overview or description of how I foresee things happening. Oftentimes it's really almost the most important thing we do. There's, there's activities, there's something for everybody, we hope. But the food, you know, what they say about the food, and they do come for it often. I also, there are programs that, you know, that are just nicer with food, whether it's our aging mastery in the breakfast part where people socialized a little bit, really increased people's enjoyment of that. We have monthly breakfast, men's breakfast or other opportunities that we would use the kitchen for there too. Sometimes we just like to provide refreshments and it's appreciated. So those opportunities will all be there as well.
Okay, so the revised budget adds, uh, $25,000 for food supplies to get that up and running. Um, and I know that folks will probably be paying a nominal amount for the.
Yes.
For the food. So it'll be, it'll theoretically be self-funding and a part-time salary position for about the same amount, which is the lion's share of the increase to the budget as proposed now.
Again, initially, yes, the thought was that a part-time position would suffice for the time. But we'll also work with volunteers, placing volunteers as assistants in the kitchen and for serving, which is really a wonderful opportunity for people to interact, sometimes younger folks whose kids hopefully are in school again. But the idea that they would have time to do that, different age groups. We also have been talking with the launch program, who works with young adults with special capabilities and incorporating them into working with us, setting up and cleaning up and helping to prepare. Tax work off seniors could certainly be part of the cafe and in the kitchen. We anticipate as well.
Sorry, go ahead, Linda. Sorry, I interrupted.
We did decide not to incorporate the idea of home delivered meals at this time or the meals on wheels. Social elder services, of course, has been doing that, continues and can continue to do that. So, um, so it was really probably a very good idea that we just take things one step at a time and develop the program itself with a new person who has that knowledge and expertise. So that, you know, depending on what they can do with the budget, preparing a lunch could be, you know, I've been given a range, so to speak, but maybe they work wonders with, with a budget that they're given and can still provide a great meal. Whether we charge $4 a meal or $6 a meal will depend on that. And then maybe, as you said, we could be self-sufficient so that revenue is offsetting what we're spending at the same time. So that's the hope.
Great. Ms. Curran?
At the end, Nancy Holt question, do we need to establish a revolving fund to ensure that the money that we take in on the sale of this food goes right back into that same expense line? So it's replenished?
Yes, and I put an article on the warrant while it was still open to add that to our existing general bylaws to add a new fund for senior center food service.
Thank you.
Does the board have any other questions about the food service line for addition, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, um, a couple of just sort of observations. One person half time running a kitchen is pretty light, I think. Um, and I would be concerned about using volunteers in a kitchen where there are dangerous things that can happen. So I don't know what kind of insurance or whatever we'd have to maybe increase if we are going to have volunteers in the kitchen. And then one other observation is that I know Marshfield, I believe Meals on Wheels actually stages their, their deliveries from the senior center. So, you know, I would hope that at some point we might be able to do that as well. So, but this is all very exciting. So, great. I, I can comment just a little, the, the chef is needed because yes, a professional in the kitchen is a good thing, but the preparations would be limited and directed by that person, which again is why we really want that person. I, I think people can be trained if, um, if that's the case, you know, if we have regulars for that sort of thing, absolutely. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't be too much of a concern. I forget what the other point that you made was, but. Well, when you look at a commercial kitchen and you do have one, they're a different animal than most people are used to. So. There's also a way, for instance, for servers. It's a, it's a service window, so to speak. So meals can be served through the window and then the volunteers can take them from there. So we would limit a little bit the people in the kitchen, but.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, just real quick, I know that one of the examples that Linda used was actually the Linfield Council on Aging when I worked up there. Same model with a part-time chef and volunteers, tremendously popular, full all the time. The holidays were oversubscribed. We couldn't get Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day was amazing. As Linda said earlier, we're, we're trying to walk before we run, see what kind of demand we have, see what's going on as we ramp up as COVID hopefully starts to lessen. And then if we need to add, uh, because we are so popular and so many people, one, that's a good thing. And two, there'll be revenue attached to that that'll be coming into the other end. So, uh, we're going to get it up and running and we're going to see where it goes. But, um, I think once we get by COVID, I think this is going to be hugely popular.
Absolutely.
Any other questions about that addition to the budget? Tony, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess I just kind of echo Karen's comment, whether that's enough money to, to fund the chef to perform these duties.
For, for the shift itself, Tony, for, for the amount of time?
If the $25,000 is enough to, to pay someone to do that on a regular basis.
I'm not sure if I just hear about the, so the salary and the hours versus the $25,000 seed money for, you know, the establishment of the program.
No, yeah, more is the salary enough to hire someone to do it. The seed money, I understand that. The $25,000 for that may repay itself. But I just want to make sure we put enough money in there to pay the salary of somebody to do it.
Yeah, it, it's in keeping. I guess it could be a little bit on the low to middle end, the 25 an hour. I did some asking, so I think it should, I'm hoping that maybe at this time.
Tony, I think it'll start off. I guess the buffer would be with the food, right? If you, the income that you get.
You know, Tony, two things. One, I think it's going to start off and probably less than that because we'll still be dealing with the after effects of COVID in July and August, I think. I don't think we'll be back to the new normal at that point. And again, if we are seeing that this is just way more popular and way more subscribed than we even imagined, we always have a town meeting in the fall that we could square up if we had to make some adjustments in a budget.
As long as we've done our research and feel comfortable with it, that's just a load of me, but.
Well, in terms of the hours, I mean, the idea that it was four days a week maybe made it a little more palatable, the thought that either I didn't want to infringe on, on the church doing their luncheon, if they go back to that, or if we at some point were staying open later at night and, and maybe closed earlier on a Friday instead of taking that away. And it was an easier way to start, but it could increase. And the cafe, I think, would run. So in that case, if the hours don't cover it, yes, I'd probably have to go back. But four and a half hours breakfast through lunchtime and then do the cleanup with volunteers. That's sort of how I imagined it. And there are models, there are.
Yeah, well, we'll walk before we run.
Good. Um, while we have Linda, just real quickly, just how are the preparations for, I know it's going to be challenging to open the new building in the middle of a pandemic. I imagine you've spent a lot of time on that already. Just sort of, how are you going to roll things in?
Well, you know what, I'm not sure if I, if I will need a green light altogether or whether once we get in there, we can, once we have fine tuned and have things in place, whether we can start to allow, as we have been able to luckily, so luckily with the gymnasium, we have been able to provide some in-person activities that can be accommodated in that large space. So, um, and also with the Harbor Community Building being empty, we've been able to allow another group in there. Of course, earlier we did some outside, we do virtual. So I imagine that we will move what we're doing now in there and start to gradually be able to add things. For the first time ever, I'm thrilled to be able to say that AARP has, had agreed to use us as a site for their tax assistance program, which is great. I've been trying to get them free. I think the new building might have been the appeal. And of course, we're not in it yet, so we're using the Harbor Building for the beginning of the intake work that they need to do and the volunteers. But maybe we'll be able to bring them in slowly. And, and there will be groups and certainly exercisers that will be anxious to get in there. So, and if we are able to start slowly with some food service or even grab and go, if it's before we have the new hire, maybe we can engage some consultants or caterers, somebody to be chef for a day and start to provide some meals that way. A lot of the senior centers in the other towns, that is how they have stayed engaged, providing meals that people pick up. We did one at Thanksgiving, we did do it and we did it ourselves, a nice Thanksgiving sandwich. And we did have some volunteer help, but it was really appreciated. It was really nice. So, um, those are some of the things maybe we will do.
Great. Well, I'm looking forward to it. Any other questions for Ms. Hayes? Yes, Mr. Cafferty?
I would just offer this up, Linda, if you did need help getting set up. One of my guys used to be the head chef at the Highland Chef. Of course, he works at the sewer treatment plant now, but he would be glad to help out at any time if you needed to get set up.
No, that sounds like chef for a day. I think I would love to know him. Yes.
Make sure he washes his hands really well.
Nice. Great.
You might lose him, Gav.
He loves it. He enjoys it too much at the sewer treatment plant.
Oh, really?
Special. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you, Linda. We appreciate it. You got your hands full. Looking forward to the next few months.
I am so looking forward to it as well. Yeah, I know, really.
Wow. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, anything else?
I think we're good. All right. Thank you.
Great to see you.
Thank you so much, Linda, for coming in.
You're welcome.
You're welcome to stay with us. We're moving on to, it's small department known as Department of Public Works. And according to Mr. Cafferty's clock, it's time to talk to him about this. So there are a number of departments and we start with, with engineering, which I assume Sean, you'll have something to say about. But I just, you know, and we get the budgets for all of these departments. And, um, and honestly, the engineering department and, and the DPW staff, they basically somehow touch almost everything that we do in this town that, that impacts residents. And, you know, it really comes out when you really look at the fine lines of the budget. So I just wanted to say, you know, I'll let you guys do the, the highlights of all this. But, I mean, everything from Cedar Point to For Shore to FEMA projects to, you know, everything, reservoirs, wells, you guys are involved with. So, uh, thank you for that. Sean, or who's, who's taking the lead on, on engineering?
I'll, I'll start off and then I'll hand it off to Sean and thank you for that great introduction. Unfortunately, speaking of which, Mike is still out on the roads. He's plowing, so I will cover for Mike. I don't think he's going to be able to log on. He may have some trouble with his phone trying to log on, but I think I should be able to cover for it. First, I want to talk about the engineering department. You know, it's made up of Sean and two other engineers and they cover everything, everything and anything from going out to look at damage to beaches, to easements, to, you know, overseeing Cedar Point, the water project for the green sand filter. They're involved in everything. The budget pretty much for the engineering report is fairly level funded. There's no significant increases. And I'd like to hand it over to Sean to outline anything that, that he has. A ton of accomplishments, as you said, and I wouldn't even begin to say if Sean wants to bring anything up.
Well, thank you, Karen and Kevin. It, it is, we do touch a lot of, or if not, not only DPW projects, but resident complaints, concerns, CPC projects. We, we managed to find our way into, into all of them. It's been a challenging year for, for all of us, I think. And we managed to, although we had some hiccups with, with some of the contractors, the projects were completed, some big ones that have been on, on the list for quite a while. Some culvert improvements, the Egypt Beach Birm, Cedar Point is off and running pretty smooth. And there's a lot of design projects going on in the background as well that'll start to appear this summer. And then the next upcoming year is actually with a lot of the FEMA projects actually being built, the repairs to the revetments and things like that. And we're working with FEMA almost daily, Zoom meetings, discussing, trying to work through projects, the permitting and the reimbursements as well, what they want to give us back for reimbursements for the project, which makes it challenging because they really limit what they expect you to repair. You said this is what was damaged or this is what we saw was damaged out there. To, to go outside of that, we end up picking up the tab. So you have to keep the project under tight wraps, both the contractor and the design of the project. So everybody stays within their working limits. But all in all, a successful year. And then, uh, as Kevin said, um, I think the only budget increase is contract obligation.
Right, exactly. So the fiscal 21 budget was rounded 490,000 and this year is recommended to be 496,000. And all of that change has to do with personnel. Great. Yeah, I'll mention, you did mention the CPC. And, uh, you know, we had the Cudworth and the expansion of the cemetery, Weston Trail parking in the North Situate train canopy. So even though it's a CPC project, it ends up under their desk to make sure it gets done. Are there any questions for Sean about the engineering budgets or their projects underway? Everyone's shaking their head. We know, Ms. Curran?
I, I think it's more of a question maybe for Kevin and Jim. You know, Sean, you do such a great job and you and Dan and the team are always so busy. Do we have enough engineers on staff?
I'll take three more.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, when we get these additional, the additional revenue that we just talked through, you know, they just provide such a unique role and service and support to everybody. Sometimes I wonder if we need another body in there.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. It, it only takes a phone call too for, for someone to stop what they're doing and get up and, and go investigate something so that a solution can be devised and the right people can, can approach it. And then back to your desk to do what you were working on and returning the phone call. And it's, it's, uh, yeah, certainly, I, I wouldn't say no.
I'm sure you wouldn't say no.
I wouldn't say no either.
I'll say no. I mean, it's, we can use more help in almost every department. It's a fine line that we walk. You know, and, and some of the stuff we do, we are better off hiring outside engineers because they might have a particular expertise on whatever that area is that we're dealing with that our engineers don't. So, yeah, I mean, it, it's a fine line, but I can find almost any department that I could have people to that can use the help. But at least in this department, we do have the ability to get some outside experts to help us when things get, get a little hairy.
Was that the technical services line?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Great.
Anyway, Sean, I mean, thank you to you and your team. You do a great job. And everybody that I encounter, whether it's planning or conservation, always has, you know, great commentary and compliments for all the work and the dedication that you all do in there. So thank you.
Thanks, too.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, maybe this is too specific, but I just want to know on the, the repair to the seawalls down in Sand Hills, does, does that repair include either of the set of stairs that are in pretty serious trouble down there?
I'm sorry, what, what part of?
That the ocean side, right, Turner Road, that there is a couple of sets of stairs that go down to that beach and they're in pretty bad shape. And I'm just curious to know if the seawall repair includes repairing either or both or none of those stairs.
No, the, and the new entrance designs are included in that.
Okay.
And it'll run from right now under design is from Kenneth to Situate Ave. And it'll run from right now under design is from Kenneth to Situate Ave. And new entrances are proposed as well as access, improving the access to them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sean about the engineering section of the DPW budget? Okay, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll toss it back to Kevin. The next is 421, the DPW administration budget, which thank you, Kevin. It was very interesting, the major budget components. I like that chart. That was illuminating. But essentially, this whole budget is basically level funded for personnel bumps, and that's it.
Correct.
Anything you'd like to add about that section?
Anybody who calls is typically greeted by Lucia, and she does a fantastic job. And, you know, we're very happy to have her, and she balances a lot of things. And usually, by the time people are done talking to her, they're they're happy they called. So which, you know, we do a great job on that.
Yeah, she is a great. She was a great ass bring in. Any other questions about the admin budget for DPW? Okay, the next is highway budget. Mr. Green is out there. I will note that during the flood, whenever that was last week, I was I was driving out, and I was like, why is Mike Green cleaning out the traps? But I rolled down my window. He's like, all hands on deck. So he's out there. So would you like to cover the highway budget, Mr. Cafferty?
The highway budget is covered by Mike Brain. Mike Brain does everything from cleaning up underneath the stands after before graduation to, you know, keeping keeping the roadway up to speed and everything else. The major components that we had in the budget, one of the things, and you'll see this come through on all of our budgets, is is OSHA compliance. We've added additional funds so that we can do some write-ups and become OSHA compliant with a lot of our stuff. We're going to have some safety engineers come in, take a look at some of our areas and work on some manuals so that we can comply, and also do some additional training for us.
Is that under the technical? Is that the technical line that's up?
It's under technical services. Exactly. It jumped from 1500 to about 14. I think it was 14.
10,000.
10,000. Okay, I think he requested 14. It was approved for 10. And I believe that that was the biggest items. Other than that, he maintained level funding as much as he could.
Okay, yeah, there was your budget. That budget is interesting, like unlike some of the other departments where almost 90% is personnel. The highway department is 56 personnel and then purchases services, which is other bodies, right, mostly?
Yep.
And and then materials and supplies. Did anyone have, I'm just looking through. Did anyone have any questions about this particular budget?
I just have a question.
Yep.
And it may it may fall undergrounds, Kevin. But where do, you know, the trimming of trees that are overhanging roadways? And where does that fall? Is that in highway or in grounds? All right, so we'll wait till we get there.
Okay.
And they, what's the interdepartmental budget increase?
Please details.
Okay, getting close?
Are we what? Yeah.
Okay.
What we're one of the things we've been, one of the things we've been working on with our guys is to try to get a semblance of uniforms. And one of the things that we were looking at is trying to get a standardized, we're working with the union DPW type uniforms, so they, I don't want to say they look more professional, but you know, maybe they do, and they stand out a little more when they're up on the road. Sometimes people don't realize who they are, and they could also people go into people's houses to change meters and do everything else. We have IDs that we use, but it might be nicer if they had a standardized T-shirt. You know, our sweatshirt, our jacket, just so that people know who they are, and, you know, who's knocking on your door and where they are at front of your house.
Any quest, further questions about the highway department budget proposal? Okay. You're jamming along. Unfavorite budget, number 423, snow and ice. Kevin, any doing that as well?
Sure. I think we just increased it by a dollar as typical, and we're doing everything we can. We're very proactive. We pre-treat. We do the best we can to reserve salt. We've had some lot of icy situations recently. We've seen some snowstorms, but we've also had ice at night again. That we always come out and respond to when that happens.
Yeah, the pre-treatment, was it like the third? This is the third season of that stuff?
Yep.
That was a really good call. So that budget for snow and ice for the DPW was 497,000, and that has not changed from prior year. Are there any questions about the snow and ice budget? Yeah, okay.
Kevin, what are we up to this year right now as percentage of used?
I would say we're probably a little over 50%, and I'd have to check with Nancy because we don't have the tallies from the last couple storms yet. We were about 26% in the latest update I had, but since then, we've had some significant storms. Nancy, you can tell me thumbs down or thumbs up if I'm close, but I'd say about 54, 56% spent.
Yeah, with today's storm, I'd say you're right. But Karen?
Yeah, I have a question. Does the snow and ice budget, and I'm not trying to be flip here, does that include the removal of rocks and sand from our roads when they're when it's a, so that's a completely separate thing? Where does that come in?
We have to come out of the DPW budget. If we have a major event, then there and there's an emergency declared, then we can request authority to deficit spend. But for what happened in the recent storm, we just have to make do.
So we have, in addition to snow and ice removal that other towns have, we have rock and sand removal costs that other towns don't.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
For example, down in Humrock, I had three loaders working for about three days trying to clear that. We rented a couple loaders, very large loaders that were down there that were probably paying about $250 an hour, plus we had to pay mobilization to bring them up from Taunton. And, you know, it adds up. Mike does a good job of managing that and keeping those roads clear, but it is, it's expensive. And we had to clean up Ocean Side Drive, I think about four times, five times.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. All right. Any other questions on snow and ice removal?
Just to to help you sleep at night, figure when we're fully mobilized on a snowstorm, it costs us between 2,500 and $3,000 per hour, the snow removal, roughly. So.
And it's snowing now.
39 days till spring.
All right. Well, if that's everyone's satisfied with the conversation on snow and ice. Our next item is number 429, public grounds. And is that you again, Kevin?
It is me. Mike Brain is in charge of public grounds. We have a new foreman. Franny retired, and Richie Fuller is the new foreman. He's been taking it on. We have a couple increases in this budget. One of the main things, we also have the OSHA, like we talked about before. We've got additional street sweeping, and that's to comply with our MS4 permit. We also have some weed control. We've also included some money for some additional tree work, and we've also included some money for chips for the playgrounds, because remember in talking with the schools last year, they said some of our playgrounds were undersized. There were not enough playground chips inside them, and we had to put a lot of money into bringing those back up to speed. So they're also in charge of the playgrounds and do a pretty good job with them, but you know, we work the best we can with it, but we spent a lot of money on playground chips. We know we need to spend a lot more in their special rubber ice chips that are very expensive that come down from New Hampshire.
That's that's included in the landscaping?
Yeah, that is included in the, we have landscaping supplies, and we also had an increase in rentals and equipment, and that also covers some of the pocket parks we sub out to landscapers to take care of.
And the rental equipment?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so the 21 budget was 922, 924,000. What's been proposed for the coming year is over a million. The net increase is about $83,000. Are there any questions about the public grounds proposals or budget on the board? Mr. Goodrich?
I guess I'd always say, I know that we do some of the, some of the contracting house, just keep in mind the near future, there will be those automated lawn mowers, and I'm serious about that. John Deere and others, just to keep an eye on or do it. It's like the Rumba for commercial areas that mow. There could be some cost savings, and I don't want to take anyone's job away, but for some of those hard to reach areas, just keep it on people's radar. I'm just mentioning it. Could be some cost savings there. That's all.
Andrew, I was waiting for the automated plows, so Mike wouldn't have to be out there, and he could speak for himself. That's that's what we're looking forward to.
As long as they have good horns, we'll take them.
Any other comments or questions, Ms. Karen?
I do. So now that now that I'm in the right budget line here, Kev. I mean, I know the the highway department does, the public grounds folks do a lot of the tree trimming, but what kind of training does the group go through? You know, we have a lot of beautiful roadways, and you know, sometimes I mean, strive down, and some of our trees are just hacked, and it's not our guys. I just, I'm just wondering what type of training, MMA? Or or what's out there from the state to help us ensure that our roadways and the tree trimming is is aesthetically pleasing and not just for safety needs, if you will. So I think, you know, we take a look at it from two angles. One, to make sure that every things are safe, right? They're not falling on cars, and people can see around corners. But then also, you know, what can we do to make our town more aesthetically pleasing to the eye as we drive around with some of that tree trimming and tree cutting?
So that's a tough question, because, you know, myself, I'm an engineer. We think like engineers. We look and we look at the safety of the trees and make sure we cut them up in that it is safe. I will say, most of the trees you see that are completely destroyed and completely hacked are from the electric company going out and cut them away from the electric lines. Our guys do a really good job with it. They don't have any formal training on, you know, how to the formal training that they have is safety, how to operate a bucket truck, how to cut a truck, how to set up an exclusion zone. We do a lot of safety classes. We go through MIA. How to climb. We don't do any major climbing because I think it's too dangerous. We'll bring in a contractor in that's a full-time climber. Mike's involved with the Tree Warden Society. He goes to Tree Warden meetings typically before COVID. He was going monthly. They discuss a lot of topics. We just took just, for example, myself, Mike and Richie Fuller just went through a pesticides class, which isn't just a pesticides class, but it's also how to identify certain pests that get in trees and damage trees and can rot them out. You know, we're involved in a lot of that stuff, but, you know, a lot of the bad trees that you see, when we take a tree, we usually take the entire tree down because it's it's a danger to to something. I, we don't like to leave, you know, stubs up. If we do, it's just for a short time, and then the whole tree comes down, and then we come back later and grind the stump.
So what's our recourse with National Grid, then, for the electric companies to make sure that they're not completely hacking our town?
You know, I conferred a gem on that. It's, you know, they come in and, you know, sometimes we're notified, sometimes we're not notified. They come in and, you know, just cut back the trees. I think they've got an easement right. They can come in and take them down as needed. I don't know of any anything that would hold them back, not like if it's, you know, we have certain instances of there's certain roads, you're not supposed to cut down a tree without a shade hearing or even trim a tree or move a wall. But I don't think they're subject to that, and I could be wrong.
Now, they have wide latitude to maintain their right of way for the electric line, so they can commit and really trim when and where they think they need to.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions about public grounds budget as proposed this year? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We will move on to Transfer Station Enterprises, which is 433. Where's my 433? Is it 433? I don't know.
No, it's like, it's it's at the back. Might be 64 or 63.
Oh, yeah, I see. Thank you.
Sure.
It is, it's Transfer Station. Yeah, it's number 63 in our books. Is the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund. Is that you again, Kevin?
It is, and Sean watches over that. They do a fantastic job. We know it's probably one of the most most active facilities in town. If something happens to it, usually we get the most complaints about it. If we have to shut down or it closes early or opens up late. The guys do a great job. Sean does a great job running it. Remember, sometimes if you're in there and it snowed the night before, those guys were out all night because they plow, and we send all our equipment out. They do Cole Parkway. They do you know, they do that whole area, and they're usually tired, but they do a great job. They're always willing to step up. They work the weekends. They work the Super Bowls. And they're the guys that volunteer to work Wednesdays and Thursdays during storm cleanup. So can't say enough about them. It's pretty much a level funded budget. There's not a lot that was increased, and I'll pass it over to Sean if he wants to bring anything up.
Now, you said it all, Kevin. They did a great job even through all the COVID. They maintain the level of service there. The guy showed up every day. And at the end of every day, unfortunately, they had to go around and and they continue to do that and spray or disinfect the outside areas where people are, the door handles, where people are throwing their trash away. They're they're spraying those ledges. And then the office and the booth as well. So they they had to adjust dealing with the public, probably the most out of the DPW departments. The Water Department does as well and Sewer, but it's quite a few people that come in there every day. And I can't thank them enough. If some of them started to step out, it would have been a different story, and all four of those guys continue to do a great job. I can't say enough good things about them.
Sean, if I can add, sorry, Karen, if I can add, just, you know, they do the can recycling up there also, and I've had a couple calls recently asking what's going on with the cans. We've got that shut down because of COVID. That's usually run by a church or a charity group, and it's just uncomfortable to, you know, with COVID, we don't want to have people you know, in those areas as well as passing cans and stuff back and forth. So that that's where that is right now.
Thank you. Yeah, no, it's been a tremendous the, it's been so seamless that it's real credit to those guys. So Ms. Karen, you had your hand up?
I was just wondering, Sean or Kevin, if you've heard, you know, so corrugated, huge demand in the country and the world for corrugated with all the increased shipping shipments due to COVID. Are you seeing an increase in the price that we're being paid for the recycled corrugated as a result? Or have you factored that in or or heard anything?
I haven't seen it adjust since we started separating it early this spring, when we started to see that become a commodity. That's when we asked residents to separate that, and the tonnage. You know, we could track that way, and we did start to receive a rebate immediately on the disposal of that rather than a cost. It is regulated, and I, the name of it slips my thoughts at the moment, by a national or worldwide, like oil is regulated. And that's how the payment is made. So it does adjust up and down. I have not seen the latest invoice from them to show me what the rebate was, but.
I'd be curious to see that because there's definitely a shortage out there in the market. So it'd be interesting. Maybe we can reap some benefits from that situation.
There's a lot of Amazon boxes. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's it's based off a scale similar to like the crude oil scale or anything else for diesel that that it's paid off of. You know, and the other thing, you know, just talking with the social recycling, I'll just mention in front of the board, we've been talking to some residents. There's a lot of private trash haulers, and some of them do not require recycling. There's a lot of private trash haulers and some of them do not require recycling. So it might be something we either, you know, we're working with social recycling and some residents that are interested in improving recycling. Might be something we either go to the Board of Health or the Board of Selectment on to require recycling with trash removal.
Which is done in a number of towns, so I think we should.
It is.
That, when you guys are ready, definitely bring that here. I know there's been a lot of back, backdoor, not backdoor. There've been a lot of um discussion about that with the committees.
I, I actually learned more about it when I was talking to the advisory board because a lot of the advisory board it had mentioned that they, they don't have to recycle cat having a private hauler and I couldn't believe it. They said it's cheaper that way, so I, that's you know, how I kind of tuned in on it a little, a little more than expected.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll help all the way around. Any other questions about the transfer station, Mr. Vignani?
Kevin, just one quick question. Um, years ago, when we were making a little bit more money on our recycling, we used to have special days where people could get rid of electronics and, and other sort of functions for the residents. Has there any, been any thought in trying to bring some of those events back?
Uh, yeah, I'd love to. We, we did an electronics one, I think about three years ago. We, I think we had like Panasonic or somebody, we got to pay for it. You know, the budget's been really tight. I just, you know, we haven't had the funds really to go and put out a, um, put out something like that, have it a free event. We could make it a pay event. You know, that's.
Maybe we could look into it. If we could get Panasonic to pay for it, that'd be great, you know, but I think I'd like it to be a free event. And, you know, once or twice a year, you give people the opportunity. It's less stuff that ends up going in the blue bag stuff too. You know, people will, people will put dispose of it properly if we give them the means. Uh, if you can look into that for this year and see if.
Yeah, I know, we'd love to. We, we level funded our household hazardous waste day, which, which we do a pretty good job on, but the cost for that is going up significantly also. So um, we'd like to do as much free as possible. Keep the trash out of there.
Great, thanks.
There's also some legislation now, and I, I don't mean to get off track and tie everybody up with it. But um where they would require the um electrical companies or telephone, or TV companies to supply towns for disposal of the waste of the stream of the old TVs. So I know that's been talked about and banded around and that's something that could be happening in the future also. And it might be a way where we would take the electronics for free and get reimbursed by a state fund that would handle that and they would get the funds from every TV that sold. There'd be a five dollar recycle fee that would go into a certain fund.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, any other que- questions about the transfer budget? Transfer station budget and commentary? All right, I don't see any. Next, um, we have our sewer enterprise fund, which is, I believe, number sixty-four in our book. I see Mr. Branton is standing at the ready. I assume you're taking the lead on this conversation?
I'll, I'll start off and say, you know, Will's been doing a great job. Um, the whole crew there, as I said, we, you know, as I said to Linda earlier, we do have a chef there and occasionally he does cook. You guys are all invited if he makes a turkey dinner or anything to the sewer treatment plant. But, you know, they've, they're doing a fantastic job. We have had a couple minor issues. Obviously, we've announced enough about the wipes. Um, the guys have really been doing extra work, keeping everything clean. We had a sewer backup in the Green Bush area this past week and the guys responded quickly. Um, Will was out there probably till about ten o'clock Friday night and we were making sure we had it all cleaned up so that we didn't have any overflows. Um, and, and it's, it's a good operation. The guys do a great job. Will does a great job and you know, they do a lot. We, we did notice, we will be adding to our capital plan in the future is, you know, for a bigger vac truck because um, you know, we could use something a little stronger cleaning up, especially with COVID. That would have been a good COVID cost. Well, you should have come up with that earlier because of the wipes. We need a bigger back truck, but um, I'll, I'll hand it over to Will.
Nancy's taking notes. Look at her. Thank you.
I'll have to get the paperwork in right away on that one. Thank you, the guys. Friday night before the Super Bowl, they were out there uh very long hours uh working on a backup in the system there. Uh thankfully, everything was resolved and there, there was no uh very minor issues to the residents there. Um, and a big thank you to the local residents. Uh, they, they were who in helping us out uh identifying that problem. Yeah, we're, we're very proud of the way the sewer division is operating. Uh, you'll see us pushing or, or seeking additional funding in areas like technical services uh to address engineering needs as we tackle influent infiltration issues for our collection system. Uh, begin deploying more flow metering and backup detection devices all across town. Uh, modernizing our pump stations and SCADA systems to be more automated and efficient. Um, and again, you also see us pushing for or seeking for additional training uh and training services. Uh, as we, you know, struggle to keep up with OSHA requirements, uh all this new technology also requires an incredible amount of training. Uh, and there's just a lot of coordination these days and uh that's the type of specialty, uh we need to pay a lot of focus to that. Uh, so we'll continue to be pushing in those categories. The other categories, um, you know, we're going to remain vigilant in, uh but we have a very dedicated staff. Uh, and as problems arise, they, they've shown their dedication and ability to adapt and rise to the problem.
Great, thank you so much, Will. Um, so the total numbers for budget for twenty twenty-one was roughly three point six million. What's recommended this year is three point eight. Um, it's rounding numbers is two hundred thousand. Um, and to, to jump out, one is a, a substantial increase in the debt service. Um, in the, in the bottom line, Nancy, is that your question? Just to walk us through the long-term debt bump?
Yes, we did issue um a bond in October that included several projects from the sewer department um that had been waiting to be issued. So there was going to be a bump in the debt service. Um, it's also painful in this particular year that there is a, a loss of the general fund subsidy. So the general fund did subsidize the sewer enterprise fund in the amount of a debt exclusion for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, that was an older debt exclusion. It retired in fiscal twenty-one. Um, so they, they have, they lost the debt, but they also lost the debt exclusion. So that's creating a little bit of a, um, especially where they had this big uptick in debt uh for fiscal twenty-two.
And that, and that upgrade, and that uptick was reflected in our discussion about uh sewer rates a while ago.
It was, and it has to be, the sewer rates have to be discussed again in order for this budget to go forward as proposed.
Okay, and then indirect costs, um, that was the other big jump, a thirty thousand dollar um increase. And that, what is that exactly?
Part of it is the flood insurance for Sand Hills Pump Station increased.
Oh.
And I can go and look, um, I think the other part of it is the health insurance. Keep in mind, we um will charge back exactly what someone enrolls in. So if you pick up a family plan, that'll jump it up by twelve, but I'll, I'll go down, I'll check that as well, continues the presentation.
Uh, I love a opportunity to jump there. Um, speaking of the Sand Hills Pump Station, we're going to be seeking some additional grant resources in order to address a lot of our assets along the coast, uh like the Sand Hills Pump Station. Uh, they just happen to be in vulnerable locations at this time. Um, so you'll see us hopefully this summer during a lot of public outreach. Uh, and if there's any environmental groups that, you know, um have an interest in any of these locations, I ask that you reach out to us uh as we prepare our applications uh to our grant providers.
Yeah, that, that is one of the many locations that was identified in, in, in the draft of the master plan, but is also in that harbor resiliency study is a vulnerable and, and dangerous place that we need to address. So maybe some of those, that work can inform your grants as well. Uh, Mr. Goodrich, you look?
Yeah, well, I just, I had a, a question on the uh rental equipment for the um for the, for the, for the sludge being hauled away. So is that for, is that for actually renting the equipment? Or is that just for having a service come in and, and like the cost for the actual haul line?
Yes, it's for the, it's mostly for the service. We technically rent the container. Um, and then they handle the container for us. Yep.
Yeah, understood. All right, thank you.
Are there, um, yes, Mr. Vignani?
Can we go back to the debt for a second? Nancy, can you go over what you were talking about, that old debt? And then also tell me if the, the recent recent projects debt is in there or what, what is on the horizon of coming in? That's not a ban.
Um, let's see, what, put it in this particular bond, I'm just going from memory right now, was all of the copper reduction. There were about three or four different authorizations for that. This is septic facility for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And there was the balance of the Cedar Point, um, the town share of the Cedar Point project. That was about two point three million. We have not yet borrowed for the uh residence portion, the betterment portion of the Cedar Point. That's in the van. That's going to be before you next week, a piece of that. Um, I'm trying to think, I don't think there's any more sewer in the bond that will be before you next week. So I don't expect this number to change that much other than the um betterment portion of uh that. So there were a lot of projects that were waiting to get incorporated into a bond to start making principal payments and that's why we're seeing this jump um go up. Uh, but it was multiple copper, the Cedar Point and the septic facility.
Well, they're both in there as a bond, not as a band.
Yeah, those are, those were all in the October bond. Um, and there's, there is, the band will be, that'll come before you next week will be for a piece of the Cedar Point um betterment authorization from special town meeting last year.
Right, and that usually covers itself, right? We, we match the payment with the year and it, any overages pushed to a part, the property management, right?
Yes, and that's the reason why we didn't put it as part of the bond that's going to be before you next week is because we don't know the final cost of the project and we will not be collecting that um betterment revenue yet. So we want to wait on that and just only incur the short-term interest for now. But to um Moore's point, I think it was Moore, maybe it was Karen, it was like a whole, you know, two minutes ago. The uh, it, it, it's, it's been a long day. Um, the change in the indirects, there was a twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollar increase in insurance. So there was someone elected or a couple of someone's elected family plans or enrolled in our insurance. And then the six thousand dollar uh change for the uh flood insurance.
And Nancy, the uh, the first part of the debt you talked, did you talk about an old piece of debt? That was.
The, we had a debt exclusion for the upgrades for the feeding plant and it, this year, that payment and the general fund has been subsidizing that. It was a debt exclusion from the tax levy, not a debt exclusion. It wasn't as supported by sewer enterprise receipts. And this fiscal one was the last year that we'll see it. Um, it's completely retired. Was that loss of revenue impacts the sewer enterprise fund because even though it lost the debt, when we did the rate increase, we didn't factor in the fact that we were going to lose that revenue stream as well. We just saw the retiring debt. So that's not helping the sewer um rates at all, not helping, helping the discussion that we're going to have to have on the sewer rates.
It's a wash itself.
It is, it is a wash.
Didn't budget for the loss. We, we budgeted for the debt, but not the revenue. How much was that dollar amount?
It was ninety-seven thousand dollars this year.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions uh regarding the sewer budget or projects?
One more.
Yep, go ahead, Tony.
So, uh, Will, I just wanted to ask you, um, you know, we're doing the Cedar Point project. And that's, you know, was the big hole in the dyke, but the, but there's many more going down Ocean. So, so where are we on? Is that part of this year's plan? To kind of keep that project moving more? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you broke up there, Will.
So I think his next project, his project is in that area. They're doing engineering in that area. And potentially smoke tests in some of the worst areas. We have a company called Environmental Partners working with Will and his crew um doing line inspections and looking for different areas of um inflow. Um, the Cedar Point project is, is I think we've brought up a couple of times, it's going really well. Um, we've discovered a lot of problem issues, a real lot of problem issues uh with the services. And, you know, some with the main line. Um, and they're moving slowly but surely, um, getting through there with two crews.
Sorry if you're getting any background noise tonight and thank you to those out there working. Um, in the near future, you'll see some crews uh popping manhole covers in the street at night in order to take flow metering uh readings.
I don't know if my question was answered. So Kevin, in this fiscal year, are we engineering and starting to go down Oceanside? Or is that the year after?
We are starting to go down Oceanside in the engineering to look for what we have to do. So we're not doing the construction yet, but this year, we're going to be looking at the main line and see if it should be lined or anything to that effect. And we're also doing smoke testing to figure out where the highest areas of concentration of I N I are coming in. Did that answer the question or?
Yeah, I know my internet's a little shaky. Um, I, I think we know that we're going to have similar results probably at Cedar Point, maybe not as bad, but similar as we go down to that area just because of the you know, the area of town. So I just want to make sure that that we keep moving down that street because I think, I think that that's going to have huge um impacts on our, on our on capacity of the sewer plant when we start plugging those holes.
Right, and, and we, we get down to a much bigger pipe as it goes further down Oceanside Drive, I think. Will, correct me if I'm wrong, is it a forty-eight inch that goes through there or what size pipe is that? It's a huge, huge mainline.
Oh, but yeah, it's a, a main interceptor there. Uh, and we should be presenting findings. Sometime in the spring, we're, we're aiming at April right now for presenting findings of our influent infiltration report.
Great.
Okay, great. Thanks.
One quick follow on that. Have you seen a um a reduction?
I knew this was coming.
Yeah, I know. Uh, from the work that's already been the laterals and that, has that impacted at all the, um, the plant? And what are we running at right now?
It has, um, particularly during flooding events. Right now, we're seeing uh much more gentle flooding events as far as the impacts to the sewer system in that area, uh which is very promising to see. Uh, so fingers crossed that maintains or holds out over time. Uh, for the time being, we are seeing a reduction in overall flows. Uh, however, a large part of that is attributed to the drought that we've encountered this year. Um, so prior to putting the cart in front of the horse on that one, uh, we're waiting for some more seasons to go by, particularly the spring season where things get pretty uh exciting for us as coastal floods and, and storm events uh visit our town more frequently then. Um, before we start to rely on these numbers that we're seeing right now.
What else did I forget to ask, Kevin?
When's the next turkey dinner at the sewer treatment plant?
Sorry. Are there any other questions for Will or for Kevin about the, um, the sewer plans for this year or the budget? All right, for that, last but certainly not least, Mr. Anders, uh, well, Mr. Cafferty, would you like to tee up Mr. Anderson? Our water division is sixty-five. Hi, Sean.
I will gladly start off. Sean and Mike do a fantastic job keeping everything running. You know, it's been, it's been a tricky year for everybody. We've had, you know, a lot of high water usage. Sean and his crew have done a great job. We recently have one water project go out to bid. Um, for some of the smaller projects, it will be coming out and we'll have a second one coming out hopefully within the next month. Um, and we'll be getting those kicked up again this year. The major things in Sean's budget. Get to the page. I'll, I'll let Sean go on because I'm on the wrong page. I'll hand it over, Sean.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you all. Um, and I want to thank the engineering department, as you said earlier, Sean McCarthy and everybody there. For everything that they do for all the departments, especially the water department. And I want to thank all the staff at the water department uh for doing an incredible job. You know, through some hard circumstances, obviously. Transfer station hands-on has it, you know, the worst, but um water department, especially distribution personnel are going into homes, are turning houses on and off, you know, seasonally. We're replacing meters. Um, and they do a fantastic job. Treatment staff have been doing an excellent job. We got hit with, with COVID um a few times. Uh, quite a few staff members got a little bit scary, uh but we and uh, you know, my admin. And, uh, you know, my administration staff, um, my assistant, uh, Nora and Linda in the office. Incredibly fortunate to have all of them. My biggest increases in the budget, as Kevin was talking about, are, are due to, um, the green sand filter plant for, uh, well, 17A. Anticipating that coming online. So I had to increase, uh, my electricity budget, uh, as well as natural gas, uh, for heating. And that, uh, it's interesting, I was in a Zoom meeting earlier today, uh, for, uh, bi-weekly, uh, update on that project. And they're talking about whether or not we need an actual permit to have over 2,000 gallons of natural gas on site. Because we're heating and have two, two generators and heating two different buildings. So, you know, the increases, I did take a look at, um, my biggest facility other than the surface water treatment plant. And because it's quite a bit smaller than this one's going to be, I multiplied it by one and a half. For each electrical and natural gas, and that's how I came up with my budget numbers.
So, so that's, yeah, you know, over $80,000 additional in the budget. You also added 7,000 for training and then an emergency reserve. Those are the other two big components that.
That's correct.
Well, the training was the OSHA compliance that we talked about.
Okay, that's OSHA. And how come an emergency reserve? I mean, it doesn't surprise me given.
I was happy to see that. I actually didn't put that one in there. Um, I'm not sure if I have Nancy to thank for that, but, um, it kind of seems like.
Smiling, so I'm guessing.
It kind of seems like I'm always going to her, um, with an emergency, so.
She's preparing.
And then, and then as anticipated, the, you know, the biggest jump in the budget is the debt service as well, which is up over 700,000 from last year. And that's to fund all of the improvements that we've been discussing.
That's correct.
Yep, okay. So the total budget in 23rd, 21 was four point, I'm sorry, 5.4 million. Uh, what's recommended for 2022 is 6.2 million. And as I said, and that's an 880,000 increase, most of which is debt service. All right, um, I'll open it up. Are there any questions for Sean about the water? The water budget, uh, enterprise fund budget or plans?
You asked my questions.
Yeah, I think we say, I really do appreciate the quarterly updates on the water. I think that, um, keeps the board and the public, uh, much better informed about this. And obviously there's an awful lot of moving parts and we really appreciate the credible dedication and professionalism of everybody on your staff and fighting through COVID and all of that. So, um, extend our thanks to everyone. Boy, you'd, look at that, no questions.
I know, thank you.
To you and your department, but yeah, and, and for keeping us up to date.
This week's been tricky for the water department. They did have multiple breaks. They had three water breaks on main lines, basically because of the cold temperatures, we think from the freezing and then the thawing out, some of the transite, we, some of the older transite, we had damages too. So one of them, one of the breaks was on Foam Road, which is a line that we're going to be replacing that we went out to bid and we're going to be looking over that contract soon. We had another one on Jericho, um, which we think might've been leaking for a while, but we couldn't tell because of the sand. And I think the other one was stone out. But, um, you know, they keep chugging along and, and pulling them out and, you know. Big thing we got to keep talking about and we'll be probably looking at in the future is, is Humrock. I think we have some, we've got plenty of leaks down there that we just can't trace. So, um, we'll keep going with it.
Great, great, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming in and staying with us and walking us through that and especially all the work that you guys do. All right.
Thank you, Sean, Sean and Will, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our fiscal 22 budget presentations for today's meeting. Uh, so we will move on if Jim's ready to review and discuss annual, special annual town meeting draft warrant, which is, um, as everyone knows right now, the town meeting is scheduled for April 12th. Um, and we have, have talked at high level on a bunch of things, but I will turn it over to Jim. And then we have the citizens petition to review with the applicants. Oh, you're muted, my friend. Muted.
You look at a special time meeting, most of it is stock articles that we always have unpaid bills, budget reconciliation, uh, emergency storm costs if we have any, hopefully we won't, but, uh, I'm getting less and less sure of that as time goes on. Uh, the annual town meeting, right now we have, I believe, 31 articles, two have been removed already. A lot of them are bylaw articles, zoning bylaws and general bylaws. The first say 15 of them, uh, articles that we have all the time every year on town meeting, budget, capital budget, your, other funds that are on there, all the way up to your chapter 91 approval, which is a regular approval we do every year. Uh, a couple of tax reductions, tax breaks for veterans are on the list, uh, which I think we'll end up doing. And again, a lot of, uh, general bylaws, zoning bylaw articles that we have on for this year. And the planning board will be in for those at some point.
Okay, yeah, so there are proposed consent, as Jim said, one through 16, 17, 18, 19 are base, or at least the first 16, 17 are proposed in consent. They're pretty much from housekeeping. So, and we do have some bylaws, so we will be vote, when do we vote? That's not till March, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Tony, yeah, go ahead.
I, I was wondering, um, I, I know you put all the enterprise funds as consent, but I think that they're important to discuss also. And if the board, m- maybe the board doesn't think as much about all of them, but I think at least the water one. Maybe should be, you know, presented and, and discussed and not asked to be consented.
Hey, just a suggestion at this point.
Yeah.
Don't actually put the consent agenda together later and the board is at liberty to take whatever they want and not include it. But, uh, the last couple of years, there haven't been a lot of questions on any of those. So, um, generally we look at those things, if there's not a lot of discussion on it, we look to put them in the consent agenda.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that, we could discuss it later, but at least pull that one out of consent.
I, I put the budget in the consent agenda if I thought I could get away with it, but, um.
Way now, as quick as possible, right?
Jim wants an hour under. How are we, um, the bylaw, how, how are we anticipating the, um? Well, let me step back. So one thing that we will be doing, which I think we talked about early last month, last week was, or whenever, who knows anymore? Was that, uh, we would ask advisory in the board to have a joint meeting in, prior to town meeting, um, to present the warrant, which funny is in the charter we're supposed to do. But so I've asked that we do a public forum, just not, you know, not for voting, not for debate, but to educate people on what these things are. And I think it's especially important this year because there are a lot of bylaws that are being proposed. That, you know, are a lot to digest in the course of a, a town meeting. We have received some, um, input on some of those. Does the board feel that any of the bylaws presented need to be reviewed in any more depth? I think we, we're waiting for planning board. We've had the.
Planning board a lot to come in and go over those review.
Okay, but we did the water conservation, um, and I know Becky's up for something else later. Uh, did the board have any other questions about that? I, I guess the question is, do any of these need further in-depth discussion before we, you're comfortable going to vote? Do we need to just sort of run through them?
I think definitely the planning board ones are like, so if they're coming in, that would be obviously great.
Yep. Okay. We talked about the revolving fund, Nancy's going to add, that's pretty straightforward. Bywaters, we discussed a couple of meetings ago. That's the, um, most, isn't that the mostly the moorings and all of that? Okay, does anyone feel, everyone feel that they have enough information on that to make a vote? The water conservation, uh, which was the tiers and the increase for fines. The, Becky had a question on whether or not we wanted more information. I don't recall wanting more information on that, um, before we actually go to the vote.
Did you skip over 16, 17 and 18?
Probably, I did.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the assessors should come in and tell us what, what those are.
I mean, 16 was actually something that was, it was, um, something voted, Nancy could correct me how long ago, to actually file a special act of the legislature to allow for that. And the town never filed the legislation, but the general law allows for it anyways. So rather than try to go back and file legislation, we would adopt the statute that allows for that voluntary, um, donation on your, on your.
I'm not opposed to it, I just think someone's got to come in and explain to us what they all are.
Okay, so 16 and 17, we'll have, we'll have the assessor come in.
16 is the Veterans Advisory Council.
Okay, yep.
And 18?
18 is me. 18, you currently do it, but you've never accepted the, the local option that, that authorizes you to do it.
Okay.
So it's how, to me is housekeeping. We're just accepting a local option for something you're already doing.
I'm fine with that one.
Okay. And 19 is the land acquisition that we're, it's still pending conversation, right? Okay. Street acceptance.
Yep. Uh, we still don't have information that I'm aware of on the Cowings Cove. That piece of land that we're, um, talking about acquiring, and I don't know that we've.
I gotta, I gotta get that for you, Karen, so it's a small piece.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I know it's a small piece, however.
No, I'll, I'll get it to you, yeah, I just forgot, sorry.
The CPC turned it down a number of years ago. And the other question I had about the water was, I had asked the question about, um, it potentially exempting the town from being able to put in an irrigation system? If we were to build a new field somewhere? And I don't know that we got the answer to that yet. And I did get an email today, I don't know if anyone else did, um, concerning whether or not it is wise to include in a bylaw? A suggestion that is not enforceable necessarily about private wells being recommended or told that they should use, the same guidelines as the town is implementing for the use of irrigation systems. So I, I do have a question about whether or not it's wise to put something that can't be enforced into a bylaw.
Right, and that was something that we did bring up at the time. I think that was sort of an un, I don't, I don't believe that the board resolved, I, I anticipated that that we would, we would think about it and that would be part of our, our final vote. Um, I know the author of that letter too, I think everybody got that information today from a resident.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure.
Particulated, um, so the question for the board is, is that something you, um, are we, uh, we're just discussing. So we could discuss that further tonight or we could put it on a, uh, the next agenda.
Well, I would like the answer to whether or not the Water Resources Committee is going to remove the town from the requirement that no future irrigation systems shall be installed.
They're not, they did not recommend that.
Well, they did by not exempting the town.
Right, so we, if we're, if we have to vote on these articles on March 9th, we need to have that discussion today or the 23rd, Jim, right? Or before that vote on the 9th.
I mean, it's entirely possible to think that people would think that the town should not be exempt, but I think we at least have to discuss it and decide whether or not we as a board think the town should be exempt from installing a new irrigation system.
Okay.
Will you vote whether you support or don't support the article, you have to have that discussion.
Right, can that article be amended, Jim, at this point, the way it's written? Becky's nodding before.
I mean, until it goes to the printer, it can be amended, um, so yeah.
All right.
I would like not to tie our hands, that's my position on it.
All right, so we do have the chair of that committee, should we, um, and hate to bring her back again. Should we, um, open that up and just focus on that particular article right now? Does the board have any objection? Mr. Bedrow have any objection to that? No, okay. Everyone should have in their backup the actual language, I think. Is it in this packet? It may not even be in this packet. Oh yeah, it is, okay, so article. Know all these, but I don't.
24.
Thank you. Article 24 has the. Is this, this isn't all the language, though. Oh yeah, article 20, 25. Is that right? No, article 24. That's not all the language, though. Where is all the language? I'm sorry, I'm not as organized on this as I ought to be. Uh, Becky, would, we invite.
Okay, on article 24, the summary says the major changes are as follows.
Yep.
Addition of tiers, which I agree with, increased fines for those who violate the bylaw. We talked, we talked about that. Specific, specifies that no new irrigation systems can hook up to town water. And it says, which has been policy since 2016.
Right.
So I believe that includes the town unless we specifically a- asked to, you know, include language that says except for town-owned properties or whatever language.
Okay, so are you proposing that we amend this? Or that we, we ask the amen, um, committee to amend this?
So it's a new residential irrigation system, so that's, that's what you'd like to say.
Yeah.
Well, well, I'm not sure. I, I don't know, I mean, would there be an example of when we would, um, that by saying that, then we're excluding commercial properties? I would rather just exempt the town.
Exempt municipal properties?
Yes, I guess.
Becky?
Hi. So we'll say just at the end of the last meeting, it was my understanding that you kind of, I'll kind of, or some of you, at least some of the select for members wanted to, um, digest it a little bit more and have another conversation before the vote. Um, so I'm happy to come back again if people haven't digested between the last meeting and now, but, and I haven't met with the rest of the commission yet. I was waiting to get all of the feedback. You know, it's something I might suggest, and I don't have it in front of me, um, would be to include language that would not necessarily automatically exempt municipal properties, but maybe have the ability to exempt municipal properties under circumc- circumstances or under certain review. So that there would be the goal of town attempting for municipal properties to not have to, to not hook up to irrigation, but if they can't, a private well isn't an option, cisterns won't provide enough water for the, um, the, the watering needs, then in that case, then the town would be exempt. So we can kind of figure out the language. I can maybe look at other towns that have done that and look at what the language, what kind of language they use. So that it doesn't just kind of blanket exempt municipal properties, but i- if the municipal property, because I can't do it. It must, needs to hook up to the town water in order to irrigate the property, then it would be allowed under certain, certain circumstances.
Or rather than try to drill down, we could also say exempt municipal, subject to the approval of the board, so it has to get a look at.
Fine.
You know, and trying to redefine, you know, drill down to everything, I think that, that might be a little cumbersome.
And it also kind of leaves some flexibility in terms of what.
Exactly, yeah.
That, that's what I'm looking for, is that the town has flexibility. And I, I can't imagine that it would apply to anything much more than a playing field.
Right.
That's where we've run into problems.
Right.
And I'd like to avoid that in future.
Okay, all right, so Becky, can you take that back to your board and, um, you know, we'll put, when we put you on the next agenda, and we've got another item to talk about on the, on this, but put you on the next agenda just to have the final language for review?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sense, everyone? Okay.
And I think the other thing, sorry too, if you don't mind, um it also was clear at the end of the last meeting that, you know, we as the advisory committee are bringing you proposed language for a proposed bylaw change, so if there's additional or different language that you want, um, you know, while as much as the commission will provide our guidance, it will be your decision at the end of the day, so we'll want to just more, we can all kind of be on the same page from the beginning, the better, you know, so we're happy to take your suggestions, certainly. And then turn it over to you to do.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and you guys obviously have the expertise and spent the time, you know, done the heavy lifting on the, on this, so we appreciate that. Um, the other thing that was brought up at the meeting, and I don't actually recall that we resolved it, was the whole question about the unenforceable recommendations to be put in the bylaws.
Right.
And that's what Karen was, Ms. Conley was referring to, that, you know, we have had you know, some pretty thoughtful input on that, and as I recall, our council was sort of like, eh, you can, doesn't really hurt, and then some of us were concerned that why would we put something in the bylaw that's supposed to be a rule that is more of a poli- like a preference? So, yes, Ms. Conley?
Yes, I would like to say that why raise people's hackles if you can't do anything about it? And I do think that raising the question about what people can and cannot do with private wells is opening a whole bigger discussion about water rights and what your right is, and I, so I, I would I would be very hesitant to add that language at this point. And, you know, probably look around and see how people actually do regulate private wells in other towns. I don't know enough about regulation of private wells, but I do know that it gets people all upset.
Well, I know, Becky, you guys spent a lot of time on this, so if, could you just, I know you did this before, but could you just give us the, the Cliff Notes on why you would, your, your advisory board, and you have recommended this language, so why is that?
We recommended language because um, we did want initially, this all kind of started with wanting to regulate private wells and include private wells in the outdoor water use restrictions. And we got a lot of pushback because we didn't have, we have we don't have specific data for our watershed. We have some guidance from the state, and we have some guidance from local watershed associations. And some members um, locally who can say that, or believe that private wells dip into the same water system as public drinking water supply. So that the thinking was that if if you're a public water supply user and there's a drought and you can't use water, then neither should the private well user, but without, we don't have like actual studies of our aquifers to show that, so we are going to work to get that information and, uh, and that data, and if it shows, you know, what we believe it will show, which is that the systems are connected, then we can kind of bring up those regulations again. Uh, in the meantime, we just, we were using this bylaw as an opportunity to highlight the fact that private well owners aren't required to follow these outdoor water use restrictions, but you know, should they want to follow the same rules and regs of their, their neighbors, that this is what the rules and regs are. So it was more of an education piece to, again, highlight the private well. Also, the other thing is, you know, a lot of, I don't know, Sean's still on the call, but you know, the Water Department definitely gets a number of calls um, for people who are violating the outdoor water use restrictions, and it turns out that they're private well owners, and they don't have the sign at the bottom of their driveway like they're supposed to. So it's just another area, because right now that information's only in the Board of Health regulations. So we thought by putting some of that stuff into this general bylaw, then it would make that a stronger and more um, well-known requirement. So that the, the Water Department wasn't going out to houses unnecessarily, because if you have the sign, they would know you were a part of it, so that was some of it, too.
Okay, Ms. Karen?
Maybe it belongs in a policy adject, not in a bylaw, right? Because I think in the past, we've had policies that we've adopted as a board. Because I think the issue that's been raised is when you put it under the text of a bylaw that exactly to, you know, some of the residents that are here tonight, as well as what um, Karen just said. It, you know, it's a bylaw, if you can't enforce it, I don't think that's the proper place for it. But maybe it's just in the policy, right, it's recommendation. So I, I, I agree with the, the, where we're going with this to, to pull it out.
Yeah, I don't think anyone just disagrees with the intent to educate people and
Right.
those things, but yeah, I have, I have a problem with, with um you know. Bylaws should be, here are the rules, in my view. Karen?
Yeah, just on, on that sign issue, maybe require, part, putting in the bylaws, if you have a private well, you must display a, a sign somewhere on your property that you are, you are, you have a private well, which would then maybe cut down, and I think that is enforceable. If.
That's already the, the, as Becky said, that's. There's a post.
But, but it, I, I, I think, I think it could be in the water bylaw as well. And it's not currently, as far as I know. Board of Health is separate, so I would say that it wouldn't hurt to add, us, you know, a, a statement to the by, this, this new bylaw or this amended bylaw that if you have a private well, you are required to have a sign somewhere on your property visible, that, you know, you have a private well.
Right, you have that in there, right, Beth? Already?
I, I do, I'm just seeing if it's how, like, what it's, what part of it, so, you know, I can talk about removing the recommendations, keeping that piece, you know, keeping the registration of in-ground irrigation systems, because that does apply to private well owners. And I think, I think that would be, I mean, like I said, I'll propose it, and I, I think that would work.
Well, it doesn't hurt to have that requirement in two places.
Yep. No, I, I agree with the advisory committee that it makes it stronger and makes it logical, because you look in one place. So.
Right.
With the things.
Thank you.
Other, Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, so I, I guess I would say, I, I think I've got a, I think philosophically, I, I'm less bothered by a recommendation. We, we heard a, a proposal tonight. It was actually gonna be an example. We, we should recommend, everyone should recycle. Right, but it's my private property, and we heard a proposal tonight, maybe we shouldn't have a bylaw to force everyone to recycle. But that's my private property, and it's a big issue. I wouldn't have any objection to having a, recommending people to do something. I like carrots before sticks. And yeah, it's not done that often, but I, I mean, I guess I'm, I guess philosophically, I'm okay with, with uh, us not being too nanny states. You know, kind of too forceful on some of these, and having something that's more of a recommendation than forcing something as a compromise. And again, I always say, I like when everyone's a little bit unhappy. But listen, I also don't want it to be a poison pill. And this thing goes down on town meeting because people think that we're over-regulating either, because there's too many good things that are in there. But I don't know, that's, that's where I come from.
Any other comments from the board, and, yeah, Mr. Benetti?
I guess I'll give my two cents. I don't think it's a proper, I, I think you know, just law and suggestion are two completely opposite situations, so I agree with the majority of the conversation that says if there's specific things that have to be done, then it should be a bylaw, but not recommendations. Recommendations should be policies and things to follow, so I would I would support putting in signage, registration, those concrete things, but the other stuff should be a policy, it shouldn't be part of the bylaw. Then again, as Andrew just said, I'd hate to bog it down on a meeting by talking about it for an hour and then potentially blowing it up.
If the board doesn't have any um, more comments, we do have Mr. Barkowitz of, met, wearer of many hats, but has, I think is waiting to uh, address the board, is that correct, sir? Let's see, let's unmute you. What, where, it's still, says, there you are. How are you?
Thanks, Karen.
I, for the record, could you please state your name and address?
That's Paul Barkowitz, eighteen Damon Lane, Situate.
Thanks. Uh, so Paul sent us a letter, I think everyone received it, he has a background in this field, and and I think we've just expressed a lot of the concerns you had. Would you like to add anything to the conversation?
I, I think you covered it really well. I, I do think it, it can be confusing to people when, I mean, most of the bylaw is I mean, it's there because it's to enforce, uh, so people know what the rules are if they care to look for them. And of course, also guides uh, town in uh, enforcing these provisions. And I think a recommendation regarding the private wells doesn't, doesn't belong in the bylaw. And let me just say, though. So I've uh, attended, you know, the Zoom meetings of the Water Resources Commission. They work very hard, they do a really good job. And I think this bylaw is, is really needed. It, it puts the conservation provisions in one place, so they're more accessible to people. They update the, the fines and fees and things like that, that's appropriate. These provide incentives for water conservation, and of course, disincentives for wasting water. It's very appropriate that the private wells be required to have a sign that's in there, there should be fines. If, if the sign isn't there, and, and, you know, that's, that's an enforcement mechanism. And you know, I, I am, I, I don't have a private well, I'm not looking for a hill to die on, I, I've been working with local governments and municipalities my whole career. I, I believe in good government. I believe when you have policies that are based on facts, the facts ought to be accurate. When they're based on policy, the policy ought to make sense. And and I think this whole private well discussion's been really, I'm afraid to say, I mean, it's just been distorted. Your well policy covers this. It creates buffer zones around town water supplies and facilities, and doesn't allow private wells to be installed within those buffer zones. So the protection of town water supplies is built in to the regulation. If, if the regulation isn't doing its job for some reason, then, then change the regulation on, on where you permit wells. But I'm concerned about this pitting one neighbor against another. Disparaging people who have spent some money to develop a well as, as authorized by the town. And uh, so, and, and besides, there are lots of other things that we are doing, water conservation resource, the Water Resources Commission, right at the forefront of this. Really important things that will promote water conservation, like education and um subsidy programs to, to change out inefficient toilets and showerheads with, with efficient ones. And, and the things the town's doing to reduce leaks in the system. Things like that, you know, that whole list of things, that's great. Going after people in private wells is not going to increase the town water supplies, it's not going to promote conservation, in my view, so I, I think you're I think taking the recommendation out of the bylaw is, is the right way to go.
Thank you, Paul, and as, as Becky said, as uh, you know, science backs up something different, we'll revisit. But we're not there yet. Um, I think, Andrew, you made a really good point that um, I think a lot of people made a point, there's a lot of really good stuff that really needs to get forward, and I have a feeling that if we don't remove this language, that Tony's exactly right, we could die on our swords at town meetings, so Beck, I would ask, unless I'm gonna, unless anybody else from the public would like to raise their hand, I, do you want to just give Paul the floor? I don't see other, see any other hands? If you would just, if you could ask your board to revise the language and bring it back to us. Obviously, there's, it, it shouldn't be a long conversation, and then we'll have final language that we can vote for, um, for the warrant before it close, before it goes to press. Make sense? Any other comments or changes, Beck? No? Good. Okay. All right. So that's that's warrant twenty-four. Are there, let's see, Tony, where was I? Hold on, I gotta find my list, okay. Other, let's see, the acceptance of the master plan, that is you know, hopefully going to be ready. Um, we have not been presented with that yet, I'm concerned that that may not make it to the warrant. Jim, I don't know if you've talked with a consultant at all, but we still haven't even had the public meetings on that yet.
Yeah, I know Karen is pushing it as fast as she can, but unclear at this point.
Yeah, so the advisory, tomorrow night, the advisory, Master Plan Advisory Group is meeting is convening to compare notes on comments. And that's the last step before something is brought out to the public for public comment, so it could happen, but that's, you know, we still need to bring it, present it to the boards and have everyone. So that one might be coming under the wire. Uh, we talked about the revolving fund, we talked about waterways, talked about twenty-four. Twenty-five's been removed. Twenty-six is signed by law. Uh, that'd be planning board, right? And as will be North Situate Village. The floodplain, is that, is that gonna be planning board, or Kyle?
Those are all zoning bylaws.
Okay, zoning, and then fair housing, and then an easement, all of those, so we need to get all those really on the agenda for next time to discuss, because we have not reviewed those. Is that correct? Okay. And that will leave us to, that takes, leads us to number thirty-three, which we'll go to next, which is the petition article, unless somebody, if I missed anything on the warrant, is anything else we need to discuss besides the citizens' petition? No? Everyone's just staring, okay, well, we'll, we'll get to those things that we haven't. All right, so that will lead us to thirty-three, which is a citizens' petition that has been prepared by Stephanie Burke, who's here on my little screen here. We've received the language in the backup, and um, we've asked Ms. Burke to come in and and give us an overview of, of what her petition is for, and why she's proposed it, so welcome. Uh, I guess you have to give your, yes, name and address, please.
Stephanie Burke, ninety-three Marion Road. So this petition, it has two parts to it, it's a mandate and then a rebate program to incentivize people to switch to water conservation. To, to encourage water conservation by switching to wat- water sense fixtures. The, the standards that are outlined in this mandate program are stricter than what the federal standards are for fixtures to be made, but they're less strict than other mandates that are happening in other states like California or Oregon, so these are the wa- EPA Water Sense fixture standards, and I went with those because I felt like they could be less intimidating for people to switch over, it would also allow for the town to apply for grants based on these fixtures, and, and that would just help with the funding of a rebate program. Currently, there are other states or other towns within the state that are doing rebate programs for various reasons. Some have been mandated to do rebate programs. Um, other towns have received grants, um, whether they be a watershed commit- uh, community, or just received a grant to start a rebate program, and all of those towns have chosen to continue funding their rebate programs because they've been successful for the town. So for example, the town of Franklin, it was originally from a grant, and they kept it going and are funding it through the DPW because of results. Other towns have chosen to fund this by Borica has a water conservation fund, and they actually had moved money from their water conservation fund to fund this rebate program. That fund is funded very, through water connection and other things that happen within their town, but we don't have one of those, but that's just an example of ways that people have funded this program. The biggest thing that I want to highlight is that the toilet usage is about thirty percent. It would be estimated of a average household, so if we were just I'm gonna back up a little bit, the reason I did not get specific into the rebate program is because of how many different towns have chosen to form their rebate programs, and I didn't want this to be a sticking point, and I didn't want the town to be tied. And I didn't want this to be a sticking point and I didn't want the town to be tied to anything specifically. I wanted to allow enough time for the town to figure out which program would work best for them. There's also towns, for example, that do things on a first come, first served basis. And a town, for example, Lincoln chose not to offer their rebate program this year due to lack of funding. So if the town gets to formulate the rebate program, it leaves a lot more flexibility. So I didn't want to get specific on that. But just, for example, a few things is if you if you took a family of four and you switched from a 3.5 GPF toilet to a 1.28 GPF toilet, you would save 16,000 gallons of water per year just from switching your toilet. So, for example, if we said we're gonna offer $100 rebate for you to switch over your toilets and we're gonna offer this the first 500 families. The family on their end would see a significant amount of savings because they'd be reducing their water usage. But for the town itself, we would be saving 8 million gallons of water per year. Now, that program would cost us $50,000, but in 10 years, when we've saved 81 million gallons of water, we've still only spent $50,000 essentially to save that much water. So again, there's different ways to do it. Other towns will say, you know, we'll give you a flat $100. Some towns will give you half the cost of your toilet. Some towns will base the rebates based on how much water you're saving. So showerheads and faucets will receive less of a rebate than toilets. If we, you know, said 500 families for each type of fixture, we have the ability to save 10 million gallons of water in the first year of the program. And aside from that, once you start adding in faucets and showerheads, you will also save energy as well. And then lastly, of course, whatever we're saving because it's not coming in, we're also saving because now it doesn't have to go out. So that's just a little bit of that as far as the rebate program goes. As far as the mandate goes, I try to be really flexible so it wouldn't be as intimidating for people to switch over. I looked at the average lifeline of fixtures and toilets and kind of formulated it with, I know I could have been really more aggressive on the residential years, but I really didn't want to feel like anybody had to have that pressure. It 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 kind of syncs up with if you were to start having your fixtures needing to be replaced or your toilets to be replaced or you're doing work on your home, it would just push you to go for that 1.28 GPF toilet versus the 1.6, which are also still out there now. So the 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 dates are flexible if we want them to be. But again, that was just the idea that in the next, you know, two decades, when you're out to go buy a toilet, if the federal standards haven't changed, you're gonna go for that 1.28 versus the 1.6. I know that there's a lot in there, so I know I didn't cover it all, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. I know that this is, and various, various pieces of this, the water, our Water Resources has been chewing over and discussing for a while, so it's not a brand new topic. And, you know, I personally think all we can, anything we can do to, I just lost my screen. Everything we can do to to encourage conservation is a win-win for the residents and for the town. But as you said, there's a lot of information in here, so I'll, before I yammer on, I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions about this particular petition. Ms. Karen?
Thank you, Stephanie, for bringing this forward. Becky's still on, right?
Yes.
Yeah, can I, can I ask Becky a question? Becky, I remember when I was liaison on Water Resources that, you know, when John Clarkson was there too, that the Water Resources Committee, I thought, put together a pretty comprehensive recommendation on fixtures, exactly addressing all these issues that Stephanie brings forward. Whatever happened with that? Is it that, did we determine that it doesn't belong in Water Resources? Does it belong in the building code? You know, where 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 is your committee on this topic?
So I don't, I, we've definitely talked about, we've talked about putting together like BMT, BMP documents for town buildings. We, it may even be in the water conservation report that was completed in, whenever it was, almost five years ago now. I think that we do have recommendations for fixtures in that. We have talked about wanting a rebate program, but we haven't talked about the nuts and bolts of it. We've talked about using the funding for this, you know, we've been talking about a water offset or water banking program for the better part of the last three years. And again, just trying to figure out the nuts and bolts and using those monies to go towards rebate programs. But we haven't, we haven't, we never made a decision that it didn't make sense with Water Resources or that it should belong someplace else. We just kind of moved on and around to different things.
Okay. And then I guess a question for Jim. Isn't some of this building code related? Or no? You know, for new construction and?
Yeah, but you can, you can still require, I don't think it depends with the building code. You can generally be more restrictive. You can't be less restrictive. Probably ties into some of the stretch code things, too.
And if I could just highlight too, is that there's actually, most of this is not superficial is not the right term, but you know, it's replacing a showerhead or a faucet. It it doesn't go into replacing pipes. And there's actually an out in there that if if the cost of updating is going to be like, you know, harmful, consequential to the business, like they they have that out. So there's an out there. But most of these are just, your urinal goes out, you need to make sure you replace it with a urinal that meets the water sense standards. Your your faucet head broke, just make sure you replace the faucets. And a lot of these aren't gonna go into the depth of having to cause a lot of repiping or anything. Because I I, the ones that I've highlighted are, for the most part, are very, are just a part of replacing a fixture. So.
Okay, so yeah, so under exceptions, you've said registered historical sites and then up to one year of demolition. And if a licensed plumber certifies due to age or configuration, the plumbing installation is not technically feasible. It doesn't, I don't see where it says that if it's cost prohibitive. Did I miss that?
No, maybe I thought.
Kitchens are exempt.
Yeah, I kind of thought when I was researching this, technically feasible would allow that out. So I know technically feasible would be, so somebody could say this and say, you know what? It it does not make financial sense for you to do this. And so it kind of, I understand that some people would want that language stricter, but I left it as technically feasible because, again, the last thing I want is for someone to have to spend thousands of dollars just to switch over to a fixture. I mean, even though they would save that money and even though it's important, this, the main goal of something like this is to get the majority of our citizens, majority of our buildings, majority of the town fixtures to convert and get over there in a way that is not going to put anybody out, is gonna be more beneficial to the town in the long run. So.
Okay. Mara, Ms. Karen?
Well, I I'm just wondering, listening to, you know, it, I don't know how we recommend a rebate program and not have that rebate program defined. So, you know, would it make more sense for, and and I'm just thinking out loud here, for this to be a recommendation to pursue a rebate program and these mandates further because there doesn't seem to be, and and obviously, you know, those things have to be worked out with Nancy, the finance team, the water department and everything. I lost my train of thought. So, I don't know. I love the idea. I just, I think there's still some work that needs to be done in order to ask town meeting to enact something like this with little detail. That's only, that's my only concern. They could just need some more, some more work. But I think it's a great idea.
Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I guess I question, so, you know, first of all, who enforces this? What are the penalties and fines for not quote unquote cooperating? Does, I I think Morris is correct. Does this go into the building code? Does this go into the bylaws? I don't quite know where it goes. I think a rebate program is a great idea. So I I guess I just question where this is all gonna go and I.
Andrew, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I I guess a couple of things. I mean, I'm, I love it. And and I think time is of the essence. And I think and I think the amount of savings, I'd actually love if, I don't know if Will Branton is still on. If he'd be willing, I'd love to to know more about, I mean, the numbers on just the toilet savings for wastewater, what that could mean, or does that mean for our inflow-outflow for sewer? If we really care about trying to get North Cituit sewered as soon as possible. If this could have massive impacts if people really take advantage or don't. But I don't know. I mean, for me, I I'd love to try to to figure out ways to make it work and not put the onus on us to try to make it work instead of trying to come up. I don't want perfect to be the enemy of the good, basically. Like not like, no, I'm not perfect. Any policy, it's not gonna be perfect and I get it, but let's, I'm I'm fine with going with something imperfect and trying to fix it later because, I don't know, I'm just, I'm worried about time.
Let me, let me ask a technical question, then this might be me for Jim. So the way this is written, which is, you know, yeah, there are things that need to be fleshed out for sure. So let's say goes to town meeting, everyone goes, agrees with with the concept, this is a great idea. But we don't have things specified, like what does the rebate look like? What does, you know, just the specifics? What, what does that require of the board to do next and figure it all out? As Andrew said, we like, oh, there you are. Jim, your blog, your box moved.
I mean, I guess it depends upon which particular portion of this you're looking at. The bylaw doesn't specify who would come up with the rebate program. That would default to the board, but it doesn't specify. When you look at some of the language, you know, I I don't have a dog in this fight, but some of the language has holes that a widely builder or somebody's gonna drive a truck through. So when you talk about the alterations, building alterations or improvement, the total construction cost estimated in the building permit is more than $50,000. All non-compliant plumbing fixtures that service a specific area of the improvement must be replaced with fixtures in compliance with the town's guidelines. What exactly happens? If I do a kitchen over, the kitchen's gonna be more than $50,000. Does that now mean that I have to do all the bathrooms over? You know, so things like that. If a licensed plumber certifies it through the age of configuration of the property, ours plumbing installation, water conserving plumbing fixtures is not technically feasible. Who makes that determination? The plumber? What if the building inspector says? No, that's, you're wrong. Who determines that? I mean, the installation of fixtures is always technically feasible. You can do it. What's it gonna cost? How are you gonna do it? So using terms like technically feasible are problematic because there's no definition of what is technically feasible. You're gonna get a lot of times bogged down and stuck in that. So, you know, when I look at it, I I agree with Andrew, the the thrust is correct. But I think you probably need to make it more specific and tighten up the language so that people know exactly to the extent possible, these are the thresholds, this is what happens. And and this is how it's gonna work. It's just, there's there's just some ambiguity in here that I think would be problematic if people try to enforce it.
Right, well, I guess that's my question is if this gets approved at town meeting as written, does it actually create obstacles in actually getting to spirit?
I think if it got approved as written, you would have to come back in the fall with with revisions to make it more working.
Okay. All right. Well, that's doable, too. But I had, I did have a chance to speak with Ms. Burke ahead of time and I, you know, that was, you know, my gut says this is, I think we all agree that this is a great proposal, great concept, devils in the details, maybe not Mr. Vignani, I'll get to, but that, you know, normally something this big, this big a bite, we would ask our Water Resources to chew it through and come up with something that was really, you know, answered all those sort of unknowns. Mr. Vignani, would you like to?
Yeah, I I think I'm trying to look at it from from all perspectives. I love the fact of conserving water and and pushing people that direction. And I'm against over-governing and telling people what they can and can't use. So I think, and I'm I'm wondering where where that would lead. And what does the town of Cituit tell people in the future about what lights they can use? And what does that tell them about what garage openers they can use? So I think from a bigger level, this is I I think there may be a better way to attack the problem. And maybe the rebate portion of it is, is the the linchpin that says, hey, it's just more economical for you to do this because the town's gonna pay for the fixtures. But if you want a showerhead that does more than whatever this one's allowing you to do, you're, you can't tell somebody they can't get it. Or I don't feel that that's necessarily what you can do. So I I'm I'm concerned about this, this from a bigger picture from those concepts. And I think it has to be vetted out a little bit more. And again, maybe attacked from a different angle that says, hey, we're gonna pay for half your fixtures if you get the economical fixtures there. So that that's my perspective, and I think that that is gonna definitely pop up at town meeting.
Great, thank you. Good points.
I I think it needs to be vetted more than just saying, hey, within the next 20 years, you've got to change all your fixtures to the one that I'm telling you it has to be. First of all, who the heck knows what technology is gonna be like in 20 years? And you know, I think we're all supportive of conserving water, but I I I'm a little bit hesitant on on this approach or the whole approach.
Yes, Ms. Karen?
I actually disagree with you. I think that a rebate program incentivizes people. It doesn't force them to make those choices. So that's how I look at it. Hearing, you know, your concern about mandating that people do certain things. So maybe we just look at it from that perspective as a rebate program to incentivize folks for greater water conservation and just do a little bit more due diligence to establish that type of a program. So I do think it would be beneficial, but of course, we got to figure out how to fund it as well.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said. It's a rebate program.
Yeah, right. And the water bank is is work that has already been in that, you know, direction. Yeah, I think to Tony's point that the way this is written, it it does mandate certain accomplishments. But, you know, we've seen that and, you know, that's, that's come down from federal. I mean, the federal government says, oh, no, I take that back. They they've they've set up high-energy appliances and the other ones are being faded away. I don't know if that's by mandate. I don't know enough about it. But yeah, so the question is, is that something, is it overreached for a municipality to require people? So Steph, we're, we, I think you, I think you see where it's coming. I will open it up to the public for comment. We will be voting March 9th on whether or not we will support it. It's a citizen petition. It will be on the warrant. You have enough signatures. But I think you'll, you can see where you're gonna have conversations on town meeting floor. And will, does the board have any other, well, I'll open up for questions and then see if the board has any additional questions while we mull this over. I see lots of mulling going on. Yeah, go ahead, Steph.
I also ask, um, I think when we spoke, I said that, you know, I I I don't know if it's a citizen's position, so this would be more for Jim. Like if we can alter it, because I know that after I spoke to Kevin Cafferty, he had language that he was, he suggested putting in pending funding for a rebate program. he suggested putting in pending funding for a rebate program. So rebate program pending funding. And, you know, I wasn't against that, but I, we, there was just confusion about how much I could change a citizen's petition.
You cannot change a citizen's petition at all. Once it's been submitted to go on the warrant, it has to go on the warrant as the citizens signed it with the exception of errata, you know, we can correct spelling mistakes and things like that. It can be amended on town meeting floor. Tommy can do whatever they want with it, but what you turned into us, what is, what has to go on the warrant?
Is the exception is you go and get the same people that were, um, sign the new one? Or is it too late? It's too late?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really too late to do that. You know, even to withdraw our citizen petition, I've been told by attorneys, you have to have everybody sign the original petition, sign a petition to withdraw the petition. It's, it's, you know, once people sign it, they are signing what you have put in front of them. And you can't change that because this is what they have signed. Again, once it goes to Tommy's floor.
You can amend it.
Say again, you could vote to, you know, withdraw or substitute, you know, whole new, whole new article. You can do that as long as it stays within the parameters of what you're dealing with. But a citizen petition is really the highest level of article. It gets sub-funded, it's in, and that's what has to be because people have signed what you put in front of it.
So she can't withdraw it either until she's, um, at town meeting, correct?
Yeah, it's very difficult to withdraw it because, so Stephanie went out and did all the work on this. She did a fantastic job. She got her signature and she says, you know what? I talked to someone, I, I really think this is a dumb idea. Now I wanna withdraw it. Well, the fact that Becky signed it, Becky wants it on there too. So Stephanie by herself can't say, no, no, I'm gonna take it back because it's my idea. Because these other people signed and said, no, we wanted to go forward. So it still goes forward.
I'd love to recommend that, you know, that Stephanie, you consider, um, maybe working with Becky and her committee to firm it up a little bit, to bring back, I, I mean, obviously you can't withdraw it until you're on town meeting. But to bring back, you know, in the fall with a little bit more teeth and some more definitions. So, um, it could pass, right, on, on town meeting floor. That would be my recommendation.
I think if I wanna get Bob Vogel involved, the, the building inspector, you know, Bob O'Neill, two building inspectors, to help out with where it should be, what it should be, they know better than I do the, the whole building thing. And when you look at it to say new construction needs to meet these standards, that's easy to say that if you replace a bathroom after a certain date, it has to meet these standards. That's easy to say that every single home in Situate in 2040 has to meet these standards. We have no way to enforce that. I don't know if you can mandate that people do that. You can come in and tell me that I have to do something in my house. So then that becomes, you know, so I think getting, uh, getting Neil and Bob involved would be a big help as to what is feasible, practical and probably under the building code, what you really want, I really wanna track this. The votes are all here of what you wanna do.
So, but what would be the difference between withdrawing and coming back or having it pass? And then, as you stated earlier, then fine tuning it and bringing it back in November could?
The problem would be if you pass it and then people don't wanna pass the amendments. You're stuck with it on work with the bylaw will be a big problem. People are going to be reluctant to pass something when you stand up in front of them and say, we're gonna fix this. This is not quite what we want it to be. We're gonna come back and fix it. People's reaction generally gonna be, we'll fix it and bring it back. Don't make this vote on it twice. Uh, because now we're gonna have the same discussion, the same debate now, and then we're gonna do it again because the people far against are gonna be on the same side. So, um, it's just generally cleaner if you can do it right the first time than saying, we know there are some issues with this, but we're gonna come back and fix it later. You can still do it. It's just, you know, perception and, and how the ease of doing it, getting it through town meeting is gonna be.
Um, we are, like, this is important and I don't wanna shortchange you, but I do wanna give it, if there's anybody in the public that would like to, give us some their opinion on the proposed citizen petition, I'll open it up. You can raise your hand or take your video off or in some other electronic way, let us know. I don't see any hands. Beck, I mean, you've got, I mean, Stephanie, you've got some time to, to talk to some of these folks. I think you got a general flavor of, you know, where things might be tweaked and, and don't hesitate to, you know, reach out to Jim or to, um, to Becky or anyone else or Bob Vogel as well. But I think, you know, honestly, I, my opinion, this is just my opinion, is should this not pass at town meeting for the, sort of the problem areas? Um, I think that you've got a good indication that the board thinks that you're heading in the right direction. That's, that's progress for sure. Um, and we're not gonna dismiss this concept, I, I believe. Uh, any other questions on this matter? Stephanie, do you have any other questions? Okay. Um, then we will thank you for your time and staying up late with us.
Thank you.
And, uh, we will be, as I said, we will do our final votes on March 9th on this, on whether or not we will support it, um, at town meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, um. Folks, it is 9:30. We don't have much left on our agenda, but we have been sitting for a little bit. If you don't mind us to, um, Becky, Becky, would you mind hanging out for just two seconds? Let us just take a quick refill break, refill an empty break. So it is 9:27, um, now 9:28 and I'll be back here probably in three minutes. And when everybody else is back, we'll, we'll reconvene. Are we having a musical interlude?
Sorry, we can stop that if you need.
I love it.
No, I don't, I don't wanna put anyone to sleep, you know? I mean, we're just getting started here.
I would've gone with a little Bob Seger personally, but hey. Thank you, everyone, for the break. Have we, oh, we're all back. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Uh, let's reconvene then if we're all ready. Becky, thank you. Now you're in my middle box anyway, so that's good. Uh, so Ms., this is the Becky show tonight. Uh, the, uh, Water Resources Commission has a proposal, which Becky will outline for us.
Um, yeah, so basically the Water Resources Commission would like to have some sort of Facebook page. Um, and we're not sure of the, the appropriate way to do it. We have a number of materials that we wanna share with residents and we have for years and we never really thought to ask about a Facebook page. But this year we've got a lot, a lot of new resources. We've got some videos, educational videos that we wanna get out. We recently received a grant through the North and South Rivers Watershed Association to do a, a lawn sign and video campaign. We've got some fun ideas of how to create competitions between neighbors and how to get resources out to pool owners. And all of these things that we really can't do right now. Jim's office has been great and throughout the spring and summer months for the last few years, we'll send out water conservation tips and links to our website. We were able to create a situate.gov backslash water clearinghouse website last year, which was great, but it's hard to drive traffic through just one arena, which would be the, the town email. So we'd like to create a Facebook page. Um, we don't, we would disable the comment section. We're not looking for this to be a public forum or a discussion board. It's simply to get, um, information and links at the end of the day, um, out to residents. So, yeah, so I mentioned it at a, a meeting, I don't even know when that was, so it seems like weeks ago, but I think it was just less than a week ago. And so it suggested that I come to you all for kind of ideas and approval and how to do that. What the Facebook page would look like, what we could call it. And just what the mechanics would be. So that's my proposal.
Oh, thank you. Well, yeah, so the obvious question, first question that I think everyone has is, why wouldn't you put content on the existing town Facebook page?
To be honest, I didn't think the town had a Facebook page.
Well, apparently we need more content then.
Yeah. Uh, and I, 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 you know, my Facebook is strictly like, you know, Situate yard sale and school stuff, my kid's school stuff. So I don't do a lot of digging around, but I didn't, I actually thought that the town didn't have its own page.
Yeah, no, there is one and it's, um, I believe Lorraine is managing it and it's, no, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be flipping by that because it is good content. And so, you know, everything gets kinda shoved over there and it's multifaceted. I think Ms. Bedrow even has a Twitter account for the town. Cause he's cool like that. Um, yeah, so my, I, I, I'll open it up to the board, but I mean, I think your instinct to, to educate and engage, I think is phenomenal because, you know, I would love to see everybody in their lane, you know, doing, yeah, public outreach. That's, that's just my opinion. Uh, but I do think we have some vehicles and, and it's important to, to, you know, make sure that content is consistent with, because you guys reflect the board. You are appointed by the board and, um, you know, there's no reason to go that way. But, um, I lost, it's after 9:30, I lost my thread in the middle of that train there. So I'm gonna just bounce it to my colleagues here. Anyone wanna jump in on this? Uh, Karen, you're muted. Your finger was up first, but you were muted.
Sorry.
There you go.
I didn't do it to myself. Must've been Seth. You heard. I'm, I'm in complete agreement about the Facebook page, use, using the town Facebook page. And I will say that one of the challenges you have as a committee, as any town committee, is the communications piece, keeping it up. Once a, a website, and I know this from experience with CPC, once a website is not updated on a regular basis, and I think this applies to Facebook as well, people stop looking at it because it's just, it, it's dead essentially. And so I would encourage all the committees in town, to the extent they have communications that they would like to get out there to not just use the town website, but also to use the Facebook page. And I certainly didn't know that Jim has a Twitter account, a Twitter account. So Becky, I, I think you're right, but, um, you know, maybe you try as a first step using the town page. That's just my two cents.
Do you mind if I just make a quick?
No.
Question about that. Um, so again, I had no idea there was a town Facebook page. We've talked about this now at our Water Resources Commission meeting where we had members of the public and all of our committee members. I talked about this at another meeting and nobody in any of those meetings said, use the town Facebook page. So that makes me think who's using, reading, taking, getting information from the town Facebook page. If it took me coming to you all.
Well, well, not, not to be, not to be fresh, but if you think people don't know there's a town Facebook page, where do you find out they don't even know that there's a town water resources committee? On that there's a Facebook page. So I don't think that saying that people don't know that there's a town Facebook page doesn't mean that it's not the appropriate vehicle for you. Especially if you can start to push some traffic over to the town Facebook page. And if more committees in town would use the town, uh, Facebook page to get out, you know, interesting stuff, uh, it might benefit everybody.
Um, I just, just as Lorraine, I just wanna say we have 4,580 users on our, 4,580 users on our Facebook page. So if you start something, I'm just enhancing what you're saying. If you start something from scratch, it takes years to build up that type of following. Especially when people aren't allowed to comment. Just, just to let you know that, Becky.
Yeah, and I, I truly didn't mean to knock the Facebook page.
No, no, it's fine.
It's just this thing. I've now mentioned this at multiple meetings and it's the first time it's coming to my attention that A, that there is a town Facebook page and B, that that was an option. It seems to make sense to me, right? If it's already there and the structure's already there, it just, if it had been brought to my attention prior, I wouldn't be here.
Yeah, well, this, I mean, honestly, this sounds almost like a win-win because we've already got a, 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 a vehicle that has, you know, um, driven traffic. I mean, it's 4,000, it pops up on my feed, I, you know, and you guys have great ideas for content. I think that might be a great place to start. If it grows, then, you know, then we look at, you know, is it the right, you know, is that where it should stay? But it would give you guys a jump, um, and might encourage others to use it. Um, I think it's a win-win and, you know, we all know with social media, if you guys are pushing certain stuff, there's obvious other pages of people that are interested in this topic that you can be sharing on and that kind of stuff. So, you know, I don't think, I think it's a launching pad more than anything. And, um, uh, Mr. Goodrich, did you wanna?
Yeah, I, I, this is, this is, this is almost bigger than just this issue though, because I do, I do some concern if every board and committee starts. If we need to make sure people have vaccine information. And I'm not trying to poo-poo any other committee, but if there's, you know, stuff on Widows Walk, then Shellfish, then a charter review, then zone, and then where's, I can't find, sometimes you'll have content overload and this is just a bigger issue. And I, Lorraine, oh my goodness, trying to manage all those other, you know, there's, there could be so much that it's, it becomes so cumbersome, I would feel terrible. Uh, because there's so much content you'd have to kind of deal with. I mean, I'm, I'm, any of you, if we can get the information out is great, but I think we could probably table the talk for the best way for communications writ large. Kind of moving forward to make sure that we're not moving down content in a way that people can't find anything because it's all mumbled and jumbled together.
I, I think, I think you're right. Like when you, the library has a Facebook page that's sort of, I don't know how it's structured, but I think it's a subpage of their website. And because of exactly that, it's like people wanna see programming and stuff, just the library. They don't wanna then have beautification pop and, and this, that, and that, and the other thing. Yeah.
I, I, right, the Situate loves local. I mean, I'll.
Everybody wants to see that. So, uh, any other comments from the board, Ms. Karen?
Just, um, maybe Becky can work with Lorraine. I mean, Lorraine, I don't know. Um, I know you, I think you manage most of the current, uh, Facebook page.
Yeah, Michelle and I do most, most of the social.
Yeah, Michelle and I do most, most of the social media updates.
Who does?
Michelle and I.
Oh, you and Michelle, that's what I thought. But, yeah, so I don't know if there's a way in which to do a subpage on it. I know on personal pages, you can do that, so, you know, maybe there's a way to create a specific water page within our town page. So I'm not, I don't think we need to talk about it tonight, but if there's a way in which that can happen, it might kill two birds with one stone here. You know, giving, giving Becky some administrative access to upload the content, so it doesn't always just fall on your plate, so that, I'll just, I'll just stop talking.
So we don't like late in conversations. Anyone else from the board? I would like to see if there are any comments on this. Yeah, I, you know, public engagement is always a win. I think to Anthony, what's your name? You're Anthony, you're Andrew. Andrew, I believe, I think you're right, we need the bigger conversation about making sure that our, that our communications program is as robust as it can be. You know, I just took a quick look at the Facebook page, and, you know, I think there's three or four posts today, it's not overloaded at this point for content. And it's diverse, which I think is why people go to that page. It's like, oh, that's interesting, you know. But I think that, you know, Becky's got a group, has ideas for some contests and things that are engaging, is a good opportunity, and I would think that we start there, and then, you know, if it turns out that it's a thing on its own, and it looks like, you know, then we can talk about, maybe it's a separate thing, like the library or whatever. But what do you think, Beck? I think it would be, if you've got content ready to go, I think working with Lorraine is a good suggestion.
No, that makes sense. I was going to say, maybe if we could talk about a Plan B, should, to Andrew's point, things that are more important come up and kind of need to take higher priority, what, you know, so as opposed to them waiting and having another meeting and figuring out how else we could do it. So more, I don't know enough about Facebook to know if that's an option. I mean, that sounds like a great, the subpage seems to make a lot of sense.
We also think, Becky, you know, again, we tend, we tend to start and work in silos a little bit in our committees. You know, the Cable Commission has been looking at a whole increased way to pull together a lot of the different departments and communication and streamline it. So I think not only just, you know, maybe speaking with Lorraine, but also Seth, to understand what his communication goals are as well, because that committee has also been working on some enhancements.
And that's the Cable Committee, you said?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's a great suggestion, Mara. Yeah, this is exactly the kind of content that would be useful in a lot of forums, so. So let me just see, is there anyone that's on, we still have, we still have people late, up late with us. Anyone like to comment from the public on this subject? Not seeing any raised hands. So I don't think, I mean, I don't know if we're supposed to, I guess we're, we are supposed to vote? Should we not vote on anything and just give you this direction to, to go work with these folks? I don't think there's an inclination to start with a separate page. Is that, is that, does anyone disagree?
We agree.
Okay.
I don't think there's any need for a vote.
Okay. Beck, you got enough direction?
Do, thank you.
All righty, well, holler, we'll help.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Becky. All right, thanks for staying late. Okay, so we're 9:10. I apologize to everyone. I would try to keep it on track, but we got derailed tonight, just because Tony wanted to leave early. But we are on to the vote discussion of the renaming of the Advisory Committee, and I would like to toss this to the liaison, which is Mark Curran, because she has been the most involved with this project. And I think that Becky is still with us. Is Nikki still here?
She's not here.
I don't think so.
She left, okay.
Yeah, I think she dropped off. I told them that I would, I would be happy to present this, so they just had a discussion. I'll be really quick. You know, since their charges to work on diversity, equity, inclusion, they felt that the title that, you know, we had given the committee didn't really represent what the work that they were working on. And I, and I agree completely, and, you know, really, when we first started out with this endeavor, we looked at different towns and different cities around the state and kind of adopted a name that we had seen out there, so I, I think it's great that this committee, you know, even talked about it and just really wanted it to be specific. So the name of the committee that they voted on is not the one that you see in your backup. They voted unanimously to name the committee the Situate Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. And it was a unanimous vote that was taken at last week's meeting. So I'm happy to, you know, answer any of your questions, but I think it's really a no-brainer, and not anything that we should belabor too much, on, it's my humble opinion.
Great. The only thing I would add is that that came up when we were having exploratory meetings prior to seating this committee. There were objections at that time, and the, and the advice we gave them was, let's get up and running and revisit. And so this is the first sort of low-hanging fruit to revisit, and I, you know, I agree that this is the group that advises us on what's the proper name, so I wholly support this. Any other questions or comments, input? Stomping a feet, okay. I'll open it up. I don't know if I see any of the members here, but if anyone would like to add any further comments from the public, I will open the floor. Not seeing any hands. I think Mara's right, this is pretty much a no-brainer, so there's no further comments. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to change the name on the charge of the Advisory Committee for Equity and Justice for All to the Situate Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, effective immediately.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this, this motion requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And there's just one more vote. Yep, I see it, yep. Thank you. So there's another one that Lorraine needs for sort of administrative purposes, which is we move to change all current appointed members to the new committee named the Situate Diversity Equity and Equity and Inclusion Committee, effective immediately.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Both motions passed unanimously, and the name of the committee is now officially changed, so thank you for that.
And it's just going to take us a little while to change the website and all the things we have to change. So just bear with us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to our 9:20, which is a vote discussion of release of restrictive covenant on 40 Beaver Dam Road. Mr. Bedrow, would you please illuminate us? Are you there?
Yes, I have you. Back in 1987, the state imposed a moratorium on the town of Situate that effectively set any new construction, the town of Situate shall not allow new constructions, new connections to or extensions of its sewer system, nor allow increases in flow or changes in use of existing conditions. So 40 Beaver Dam, when it was connected in 2005, it was limited to two bedrooms under this covenant that was part of the 1987 moratorium. We made the upgrades to the plant, and the sewer department is recommending that we lift the two-bedroom moratorium as the residents wish to add a third bedroom at that location.
So this has been reviewed and accepted by the Beaver Dam. Mr. Vignani's shaking his head.
Why are we doing this?
We've done this several times.
Yep.
Over the past several years. I think Will Branton's on the line, too. Will, are you still there?
He is, he's there. He's, he's got a thumbs up on his emoticon. So Tony, do you remember when we did the?
I remember doing it one other time.
The sub, remember the subdivision across from Wapatack? They were not allowed to hook up because there was the moratorium at the time, but they were given the, basically, when there's time, you can, and nobody ever did. Yeah, so I think this restriction was put in around the same time. Will, you're now unmuted. Would you like to add some comment?
Yep, yeah, so this is a lifting of a restriction on a particular property. This would allow the property to, say, add a bedroom, which is something we've allowed for other properties per our rules and regulations, as the moratorium, which restricted its bedroom limit, has now been lifted. So this just reflects that that moratorium is no longer in effect.
For this one property?
Yeah, for this one property.
What about all the other properties?
I, one presumes that, yeah, the moratorium has, has been lifted or is over. We, we simply just process these requests when, when, when requested. I mean, we could refer to the, the news article where the moratorium was lifted, but I guess in some cases, a particular property was assigned one. So as they, if they go to prepare to sell or transfer their property, it's important to note that they will incur a sewer inspection. So if there's any issues with the sewer line, or if they have a pump system, what have you, you know, that can be identified at the sewer inspection and then, you know, remediated.
So, well, we had a big problem last year with somebody on that, right?
We had a couple, yep.
Tony, what was the problem? Somebody added bedrooms without having permission?
They didn't know that they had to get a sewer, a sewer inspection.
Oh, yeah.
And that it, it was stopping the sale of a house. Right?
Yeah, we, we had a couple backups. A couple people moved into newly renovated properties, then experienced sewer backups shortly thereafter on the private portion of the pipes, I should note out.
So does every, does every house that is up for sale go through a sewer inspection? I know I'm getting off track with this property, but that, that was what the concern was, right?
Correct. We are, we're currently in the process of formalizing what that inspection entails, as, as that's been relatively ambiguous until this time. But, yeah, all properties connected to town sewer at time of sale or transfer should be undergoing a sewer inspection as part of that.
And is that in the bylaws? Is that in the?
That's in the sewer rules and regulations.
Yeah. And you have the big push with the Realtors to educate them, I believe, right? I know we're off topic, but it's important.
Yeah, the Realtors didn't know anything about that.
They didn't.
Right, this is another one awaiting engineers' review as we, as we look forward to make recommendations in the early spring. Hopefully, ideally timed with the, the, the spring Realtor season there.
So, so back to this one property, so are we doing this for anybody that comes to us?
That has been practice.
So if somebody comes to us and says, it's a moratorium, and I'm looking to sell my house, and the new buyer wants to build on it or expand it?
This is a deed restriction that we're lifting. It's a restriction of the deed, and they're trying to sell their house. It's actually on their deed that they're restricted.
You, you have a group of people in town that, for some reason, whenever they built their house, are now stuck with restrictions on their property that no one else in town has. People who built their houses later don't have this restriction, so one at a time, these people realize, hey, wait a second, I have a deed restriction on my property, I want to add a bedroom, well, I can't. So either upon selling or realizing they have it, they come before us and say, you know, this is put on in 1987, the moratorium has been lifted, but I'm basically still living under that moratorium.
I got it, okay.
Mr. Goodrich?
Is there a mechanism for us to do a, I mean, if we could find out if there's like 35 of these houses?
No.
Lift the deed, no?
No, I mean, I suppose there is, but it's, I mean, Will, would you like to answer that? I mean, it's individual deeds.
It'd be a lot of work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to extend revenue to do the deed search on private homes.
Yeah, the rules and regulations regard this as a private matter. So, so should, should the private property have the need, they could reach out to the department, certainly.
Good question, but, yeah, it's, I think. Any other questions about this request? Is there anyone in the public that is waiting around that wants to talk about this? I see folks who like to raise their hand. Have any input? I see no hands raised. You can use the reactions to raise hand, or just take your video off. I see new comments from the public. Does the board have any further comment or questions about this? Would somebody like to make a motion? Or not, if we have no motion?
Move that the Declaration of Restrictive Covenant, recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 4687, Page 235, is no longer necessary, and therefore, as the sewer commissioners, the dwelling at 40 Beaver Dam Road is no longer limited to use or occupy or occupancy as a two-bedroom house and can be used or occupied as more than a two-bedroom house.
Motion by Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so Mr. Goodrich's hand was up first, so Mr. Goodrich, second. Is there any further discussion?
Just one quick, so Will, can we just clear up that sewer inspection?
Yeah.
You know, if every house is going to be expecting that, and then also may have to actually repair it, repair a sewer issue before they can sell the home?
Certainly one that we should probably clarify. I request that we add it to an agenda for some discussion, and we coordinate it with the recommendations from our engineering firm on that matter.
Yeah, I just think, I don't think anybody knows that.
Board of selection acts as the sewer commissioners for the rules and regulations, so any sort of clarification on that matter, I suppose, should be a discussion there.
Yeah, so when you're ready, yeah, let us know. We'll put it on an agenda, because I know you've done some push, but we should, we should get it out there.
So after Mr. Goodrich seconded it, do we have a unanimous vote?
We're about to have a vote, so any further discussion on this matter? If no, seeing none, we require a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes 5-0 unanimously, and the restriction covenant on 40 Beaver Dam has been lifted. That moves us on to our 9:30 discussion vote on this senior center contract for AV equipment. Ms. Nancy Holt is here to present.
So the Public Building Commission at our last meeting awarded a contract to DJI Communications LLC to provide and install the audiovisual equipment for the new senior center. They, the architect had moved forward with a bid under the states, under one of the state contracts, I forget which one it was, OFF 40, which is the furnishings contract. And they had received four responses. The range was $96,254 to $187,449. State of the PBC voted to award to the low bidder DJI Communications in the amount of $96,254.16. As with most of the contracts that have gone on through the building committees, even though PVC is an administrative project, they come back to the board to also have a vote. So this is now before you see if you will also vote to award the contract that PVC has recommended.
Thank you, Nancy. So we do have all of the backup on, on the bid process and this request. Are there any questions or comments about this, Mr. Goodrich?
Well, so at the Public Building Commission meeting, there was a lot of discussion about this, because this was part of the original bid. And the, and the discussion was that this should have been part of the Delphi and the original contract itself. And this is now, we're double paying for this?
The discussion was raised by a member of the PVC, Joonice, who was actually, before he was a member of the PVC, was one of the filed subbidders that bid on the senior center project. So he is very familiar So he is very familiar with the filed sub bid. The filed sub bids, there were three received on the senior center project. There was a, I believe it's an addendum that was issued for the AV equipment. The the sub bidder that was selected by the general contractor, we don't choose who the general contractor chooses. Decides to work with, they themselves choose, and then they bid on the project overall, including all the subs. Was WJ Griffin. And they, their bid was nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The next highest bid was an. An East at one million one seventy-three, the delta of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. So PVC talked about this to some extent because of the question, the concerns that Joe raised that potentially, you know, why are we double paying? It was supposed to be in the electrical contractors bid. And what the OPM brought forward was that the electrical subcontractor says it's not in this bid, that there is some. Ambiguity about the actual bid documents and that the PVC decided that one. It was budgeted separately, a hundred thousand dollars for this equipment. And two, that the general contract. Itself was lower because they carried the lower bid from Griffin, which was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars less. So they felt they already captured the hundred thousand dollars. That they weren't in fact double dipping because they used a lower sub filed sub bidder. If they had used the A and E's, it would have been kept, the the equipment would have been carried according to Joe because he said, you know, he was involved in it at the time. But that bid would have been a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, so it would have been almost double what the equipment is going to cost us to buy separately. There was discussion about whether or not to go back through, we have, we can't go to Griffin directly, we have to go through Delphi. And there was discussion of whether or not to do that. And the members of the PVC who are more familiar with building facilities and their facilities experience and their professional lives and the OPM felt. That the case was poor, they could probably incur legal costs or tie it up. For quite a long duration, trying to get to get this resolved and the outcome would unlikely be in our favor. It didn't mean it wouldn't be, and it didn't mean we didn't have to. But the PVC felt that, you know, we're getting to the end of the project, we want it, we want to finish getting the building fitted out. And there was this delta between the two, the low bid Griffin and higher bid, which was almost double what the award of this equipment was. That's why they decided to move forward and award a contract.
Right, so my, so I guess my concern is that. And watching that discussion is that. Issue was, oh, well, we might be overpaying, but we need to get this done quickly, so. Hundred thousand dollars, let's not, I think the exact quote was, let's not hold their feet fire and let's just get this done. And I guess over ninety-six thousand dollars. In a pandemic, when I don't know how full, you'll say, I want the project done as quickly as possible. But I also want it done. In a way that we're not. You know, spending money we don't need to spend. You know, it's not like this, the the center is going to be jam packed full needing the seventy-five inch. Flat screen TVs in every room. You know, I would humbly suggest that we at least think about if we should go back to go back and see if we could recoup some of this money. I mean, that's that's just my suggestion.
I think you. Two separate conversations. I think we can still have that conversation. We can have that conversation with the architect, whether or not the spec was written correctly. With the contractor, but in the meantime. This is a bid that has to be awarded if we're going to get this project finished. So almost two separate conversations, you go ahead with getting the work done and then go back after the contractor to say, we already paid you for this, you owe us a delta. If that makes sense.
Right, I think Andrew's point is that if we approve this, then we're not going to have the leverage to have that conversation.
I think we have, we we're either right or wrong regardless of whether we issue this contract.
Are there any, Mr. Vin, sorry, were you just scratching? Any other comments from the board?
Well, I I guess my question is, did did the other contractor just misread that? You know, what he was bidding for, you know? Should he have, should he have pulled that out of his bid also?
Um, the. The OPM was not surprised by this particular file sub bidders. Response. And we have had this filed sub bidder on other building projects and I am not surprised by this filed sub bidders response.
Yeah, I I.
Is a reason why they're the low bidder all the time.
Well, they didn't get, oh, the the actual low bidder.
Yeah, I mean, they were the low bidder of the three. We're we're not the ones who choose and the the general contractor chooses who they want to work with and incorporate in their bid. This filed sub bidder has been on other projects of ours and this was mentioned that there's, you know. They are the low bidder because, you know, it that these are the kinds of things that happen. I don't say this specifically, but. Try not to say anything I shouldn't say.
No, you don't have to say anymore. I I guess it should be clear, either the video was included in the in the in the bid package or it wasn't. And either we're supposed to pay for it separately or not.
And and we have two sub bidders to that project, one who says it was it was included and the other one who says it was not included.
Right, but the OPM should know.
The OPM said our case was weak, didn't say that we couldn't pursue it, just said that our case was weak.
And why? What what's our case? Our case is, was it in or was it not in? We're not looking for it.
The issue was the, I believe the, I don't want to miss. And speak about what the problem was, but the ambiguity of the language that. That one sub filed sub bidder could read it and say, no, that it's not included. You know, that was the problem that the OPM had with it, that there wasn't a slam dunk there to say it's right there, it's black and white. You have to, you have to supply.
But don't, don't we pay the OPM to make sure that the language is cut and dry and not ambiguous?
No, that, this, this is the architect. It was the architect who wrote the specs.
And then.
The OPM looks over it all. All right.
Right, we pay people to make sure that it goes out the door, right? Okay.
I don't disagree.
All right, so let's think about this. So if this isn't approved, then what happens next?
Well, we, I'm sure we still owe money to both of those other parties. That we could hold in abeyance until we got this issue resolved.
James?
Well, I mean, a couple of things, the senior center is not done. Project's not closed out, you have to go fight about whether or not you're going to get this. Back and whether you win or not. The contractor can't finish, he's now has delays. To finish the project that are caused by the town, not by the contractor, so he starts hitting us up for delays. Which is going to cost us money. Again, really, the the.
Well, that's my point, pay for it and do it and we'll go back and figure it out with them during that time.
That's that's my, what I, kind of what I said to Andrew, it's really two different conversations, one is getting the work done and two is finding out who's responsible if we think there's a mistake here. And holding them responsible, this is the architect.
Okay. All right. Any other?
And I guess the building committee's opinion was it didn't matter because they were still going to be lower than the other guys anyways.
I I think the buildings committee's position was, and and I was in the meeting, Nancy was there, was that. If this subcontractor had included this in his bid, his bid would have been a hundred thousand dollars and change higher. Than what he submitted, and that's why there was such a big delta between the two bidders. Is that correct, Nancy?
Yes.
But he still would have been lower.
Still would have been.
Depending what he carried for this, I, yeah, I don't know, Tony, he might not have been if he carried.
I thought that's what Nancy said, a hundred, still a hundred thousand dollars lower.
Yeah.
Depending on what he carried, but keep the PVC's opinion was that the general contractor's bid would have been higher. Had they not carried this filed sub bidder at this low amount. They felt that they recaptured the ninety-six thousand dollars in the contractor's bid because they carried a lower filed sub bid. If they carried the next filed sub bidder up, which was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars higher. Then their overall general contract bid would have been, you would assume, somewhere in the area of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars higher. I don't know what the the one that they did carry, what his number would have been. I don't know if, you know, you know, I can't speak for why they didn't include it or why they claim that they didn't include it. If this is just something that works for them or if they really just did not unspec appropriately.
I mean, such a huge delta. I mean, you would have thought that would have been, alarm bells would have been going off. Hello, this bid is so much a hundred thousand dollar difference. What's missing here? I just to to get this news so late in the game is troublesome, I guess.
But I mean, a hundred thousand difference on a ten million dollar, nine, ten million dollar bid is not a big difference.
No, but the, I mean, not on that electrical contract, it was. Wasn't only like two hundred thousand?
Yeah, the the range was one point one eight to eighty-five.
That, still, well.
No, I mean, we we can get into the the stupidity of the filed sub bid statute if you want. But basically, filed sub bids, over a certain amount, you have filed sub bids, people come in and bid. And then the general contractor picks from the filed sub bids. We have no say over who they use or. And that's one of the problems with the public construction is that these GCs. Really have no connection to the subs. No, a normal construction company uses the same subs all the time, and if they have a problem with the subs, they get rid of them. And these type of construction projects, the GC and the sub might never work again. And when you open the bids. Especially on a large project, you know, you'll have Andrew Goodrich Electrical not to be used with Tony Vignani Construction. I mean, they will have. Exclusions carved right out, only to be used with Tony Vignani Construction. It is nuts the way this process.
Yeah, but we are in charge of the addendums. So at some point, somebody knew there was an addendum that's costing us a hundred grand right now.
Yeah, and all all three of the of the sub bidders did acknowledge the three addendums. They acknowledged that they included them, but the question is how they interpreted them.
And I guess, Tony, the the position of the building committee is. It's not costing us a hundred thousand dollars because if it had been included, we would have been paying this upfront instead of adding it down.
Right, okay, I I agree with them. I would support. Approving this now and making sure somebody's looking into it.
Yep.
You know.
I'll I'll carry that message back to them. I I believe that's where they were moving forward with it. It wasn't a dead issue, but I'll reinforce that with the chair and the other members.
You want a motion?
I would like, I don't think we need a public comment on this, so I would like a motion on this, please.
Move to award the contract to GGI Communications LLC in the amount of ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars. And sixteen cents for the furnishing and installing of AV equipment at the new senior center.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Vignani, is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran, is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, seeing no hands raised, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes, but Jim, please follow up on the other issue.
Mr. Vignani?
Yeah.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
No.
Motion carries board one, and the directive is for the town administrator to. And the finance director to work with PVC on the secondary issues of concern. The, oh my goodness, we're right on to old business. And moving right on, which is review status update on the retreat follow-up meeting. This agenda item is on because of the unexpected surplus of budget and we wanted to just take a quick look. While we look at the, and we haven't, you know, by the time we review budget, we should have, as Jim's presented us with an allocation of the use of those funds. And it was astutely recommended by some board members that, you know, let's take a look back and see what we said we wanted to get done this year and. I'll go through it quickly because of the late hour, we were going to do, we wanted to address the old gates use, we wanted to do. North Situate Sewer, the water treatment plant, I'm Cliff noting this. Pier forty-four, the DEI Commission, turbine, financial flexibility, master plan, facility plan and charter. And I would say that with the exception of. The B wing at Gates, we have made progress on all of our goals, so well done, committee. And, you know, sometime when you, we we can sit around and it's not ten o'clock at night, we can review that, but I would. Just put it out for everyone that if. You know, we 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 we're we're in unexpected flush right now. That perhaps if the last. Agenda or retreat goal was to try to think about pier, building. The B building, B wing and gates. Maybe there might be an opportunity to apply some resources there to further our. Review of that, that that's my opinion, but I want to open it up to you guys to see. If any of these goals or committees, if you feel that we're falling short or if there's an opportunity we should be pursuing that we're not. And it may not necessarily be for tonight, but I think in the context of the final budget, it's important. Tony, did you have your hand raised or just following a?
Just call. I I do want to think about that and, you know, come back at a later meeting and discuss.
Okay, well, we all have that opportunity, but I thought it was, it was a good sort of. Moment to stop and pause and think about stuff, but I was really pleased to go back and review the notes, which is in our backup. Things that we wanted to do, that we really moved the ball on, the things we thought were important with. And 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 you can argue that the B wing, you know, with the food pantry, at least. It's not sitting idle, but I don't think that was our intent, it was more of the long-term goal, so. All right, let's think about that and the context of our budget discussion coming up. Which, you know, I know you don't want to move on, but we do have new business to discuss drain layer license renewals. And we have several, would somebody like to make a motion on it?
With a motion?
Please.
Move to approve it, a renewal of a drain layers license to the following businesses, SLT Construction Corp. Sean Farrell Excavation Incorporated, Paul LaBelle. EL, Marquetson Sons Incorporated and Paul F. Spencer Jr. Incorporated.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second by Vignani, any further discussion on drain layers license renewals? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, thank you for consolidating this, Lorraine. All business, we have already done our liaison reports, God bless you. Madam Clerk, do we have correspondence?
We do, and I'm looking at the first thing is the Situate Sister Cities Project, Inc. Winter Film Festival, upcoming films, and I'm not very good at French, so. February ninth is Le Silence de la Mer. February twenty-third is Demand to Commence, and here's the hard one, March ninth, qu'est-ce que c'est en fait au bon Dieu?
Bon, bon.
Good. And I'm sure Lorraine will probably put this flyer up on the Facebook page.
I think it's already on there, so.
Oh, okay, I wasn't there to, I didn't look today. We did have an update from the Plymouth County Treasurer earlier, but we do have correspondence from them updating us on the amount of money. That we've been awarded, and that was very good news. We did get a communication from Xfinity, they have to file. A report to the town on complaints, I don't know how often I, I'm on my little cell phone here, but. I will tell you a surprisingly small number of complaints, considering how much can people complain about Comcast, at least according to their records. They've had a total number of complaints of twenty-nine. So, go figure. And finally, the Mastio. And finally, the Mass DOT has sent us an environmental notification form about the MBTA's potential service reductions in 2021. I know that's been an ongoing topic, but they are accepting public comments, and you can go to www.mbt.com/forgingahead. That's, um, anyway, so before they do anything, they have to go through this process, and comments must be submitted to MIPA no later than Tuesday, March second, 2021. So, and that's it for correspondence. We did get, all get the email from Mr.
Barkowitz.
Thank you.
So. Somebody fo- forward me that email for the record, please?
Yes.
Thank you, because it wasn't received here. I don't believe.
I will, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, he sent it individually, but.
Yeah.
Great, thank you for that, Madam Clerk. The, yeah, the whole thing out the MBTA, it really has made an impact, and it's an ongoing conversation. So if you're inclined to add your two cents, it really is making a difference. So that concludes our correspondence. Could I have a motion? Or is there any discussion about meeting minutes as proposed? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Move to accept the minutes of the Tuesday, January nineteenth, 2021 meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Move by Ms. Conley. Is there a second?
Second.
Karen, she, she did this, so. Seeing any, no further discussion, this requires a roll call vote. Did you have a discussion, Mr. Vignani? Okay.
Let's just second it again.
Okay, we've had a seconded, seconded. But the minute, three, let, Mr.
Do you want to, do you want to accept both minutes, and we'll do one roll call vote?
Yes, I'll accept the second motion. Thank you, Ms. Somebody like to make a second motion?
On the executive. To accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on January ninth, 2021, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Move by Ms. Kern. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Conley, too late.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote on both motions.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani? Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you. All, motion, both motions carry five-zero. We will be moving into executive session. I will remind all of those who are within signing distance of Town Hall that there are documents that need to be signed and, and papers to be picked up. So go visit our friends at Town Hall.
Yes, we have a lot of things, we have things in your mailboxes that need to be picked up as well.
And Lorraine misses you, so go down. And so we do have an executive session, to which I am required to say, the chair declares that the Board of Selectmen move into executive session pursuant to purpose six of the open meeting law to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate property. And I declare an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position, position of the Board of Selectmen in connection with this matter, four forty-three to four sixty-one, Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The board will, will not reconvene an open session. Is there a motion?
Did you say the topic?
Yeah, four, four, four forty-three, four sixty-one, Chief Cus- I can't even say.
Oh, great.
Yeah, that road. Your road. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Ms. Kern. This requires a roll call vote. Should it pass, we will adjourn and not reconvene.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, everyone, very much for joining us on this lovely evening.